Thanks for the warning.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a hold call, please?
Commissioner Ansorgi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Bonick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sotis Little is absent right now.
She was talking.
With prior notice.
She did call and she will be here later.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Lotner.
Present.
Thank you. So then that brings us to communications, proclamations, and presentations. Have administrator talk.
We have several companies going to turn the light off since most of them have a power horn reputation. So happy July, hope everyone had a good 4th of July. Patriotic time of the season. I think it's great that there's all these celebrations in Leelanon County. I know there's this great parade in Leelanon every year. This was at the Cedar Poco Festival here. One thing I noticed at the Cherry Festival too this year, there always were WWII and Korean veterans in every parade and that's not the case anymore. It's kind of a passage of time. I went to Cherry Festival, they had one veteran who was in a car from WWII. But it used to be that every parade had many veterans marching and I think those days in the 40s are gone. Building safety, this was a farewell party for Linda. She left us after 27 years. If you look at her, how happy she is there. And the staff had a little luncheon and then we had a farewell party with the whole building here for her. But this is the whole staff here. It's very seldom, we'll get a picture of all of them. There's been a lot of changes made this past year and I asked Paul and I think Amber's here too, to talk about the online application. We talked about that three months ago, started that. And I thought it'd be good for you to hear an update, how that's going. So Paul, Amber.
So basically, I'll tell you that we have today 230 online.
Paul.
Sit here so they can hear you and they can record it.
The microphones will pick up your voice.
Okay. Yeah. So we've got the online thing going now and we've had 230 so far. So we're very pleased with that. Really helping out the contractors. They can go online, they don't have, a lot of them have to make a long trip into here from Traverse City. Or if they're guys working here, they're very busy during the day, they don't have to make the trip into the office, they can do it online and it's working out very well.
So by 230, those are permit applications and permits or doing it all online?
Yeah, what this is, is there's 37 building applications. So that's, that is the most complicated one where a builder would send his plans electronically along with all the other required documentation, his land use, his health department, so on and so forth. But the way that Amber set it up, it makes it pretty easy for the guy to go on there. He can just kind of follow the steps and it's, that's worked out real well. And then the trades permits, we've had quite a few of those, which is generally just putting down, if you get an electrical permit, how many circuits or plumbing permit, how many fixtures, how many inspections. So that's been working out really well for the contractors.
Great.
Amber, any other questions?
There's been a lot of really great feedback. A lot of the contractors really like it. Like Paul said, it's something that's really receptive to the contractors that are having to travel quite the distance even to just pick up their permit. So it saves them twice the travel and then they can just print everything out on their own. So they've been very receptive to it.
Plus they can check the status of their application.
Along the line.
So it saves phone calls, saves people coming into the office.
Give me your answer.
I had one guy, unsolicited, just said to me, "This is the best thing the government has done for him in his memory." So that was, you know, it was unsolicited, you know. He just, he just thought that was just like sliced bread, you know.
I actually had the same experience at the coffee shop and this gentleman who in the past has been quite critical of the program, has been quite vocal about it, came up to me and says, "I want to talk to you." I said, "Okay, here we go." And he actually said, he never thought he would apply online, but he went online and he says, "Wow, this is really easy and I could do it at home and I can have my cup of coffee, breakfast and do it without coming into the office." He was very complimentary. So Amber deserves a lot of credit, she's the one that's kind of shepherd is through, she's taught the classes. As people come in, she helps them if they don't understand the process. So it's really worked out very well. And we're just in the beginning stages too. I think more contractors use their word gets out, the more we'll take advantage of it.
All right. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
This was a ceremony last month announcing a new airline coming to Traverse City with direct flights to Florida and Commissioner Rushton and I were able to take part in the ribbon cutting ceremony. But also Commissioner Rushton, Commissioner Bonick and I have been working with the Airport Commission the last three months, potential new model of governance. And Commissioner Rushton, would you like to give us an update on that?
Sure. Just as a little background for the people in the audience, Northwest Michigan Airport Commission operates under a 40-year operational contract. And that contractual agreement is between the airport owners, Grand Traverse County and Leelanon County. Each one of the counties owns 50% of that airport. The current agreement does not address important issues that affect airport operations, thus the Governance Ordinance Board was appointed to review the current document. The job of the Governance Board is to review the existing model of governance and make a recommendation to the respective boards. I'm not sure how long this board's going to be, probably five or six months, I would guess. And at the end of that, that board, then it would be then presented to each respective board for the boards to make a decision about the operations of the airport. Currently, that 40-year agreement, we're about midway in that contract. However, it's been discovered that there are some issues that were never addressed. So it complicates things when trying to operate the airport. And, you know, there's always new rules and regulations, so it was a good time for us to review that right now, going forward. Did you have anything to share, Will?
Well, no, I mean, she's, she's right about the 20 years, they're running into the 20 years that's basically left on it. And, and any new contracts, anybody who wants to rent or lease property, they want a minimum of 20 years. So they're, they're concerned that if, once we get to 19, they're, they're going to have problems and they'll have to be coming back. And I, and I think the Costco thing is what brought this all forward because I think they came to us three or four times to get that okay. And that was time consuming and costly for lawyers and things. And so they're looking at trying to find a better way to, to address those issues.
Thank you. We meet the last Tuesday of every month and probably five, six more meetings, I'm guessing, based on our schedule. So we'll keep the update on that.
And you were on TV too.
Oh, well, good, that's good to know.
Yeah, that was great news. That was great news. Another discounted airfare for our community, so.
Yeah. To Tampa-St. Pete's, Ponte Gorda, Fort Myers, and Orlando-St. Fard, starting October 17th, I believe. I know people that bought tickets already.
Wow.
Because they had some great deals beginning $69 tickets.
Wow.
Technology update, we formed a partnership with Safety Net recently and I thought it'd be good for all of you to hear how that's going and so I asked Ron to give an update.
Okay, we, we've been doing pretty well. We've got Safety Net online with us now, they can monitor all our servers. We're ready to roll out the new antivirus software and remote control for all of the workstations. We've identified all the workstations that will be in the contract. There's some of them that are, that probably won't be in the contract or won't be in the contract because they're like the voter registration, which is a state of Michigan system, you know. So there's, there's some of them that they won't be covering. So we've identified all the workstations. We had contracts set for 150, we ended up with 143 workstations under that contract. So I think we're pretty well on target there. They're almost done with their assessment of the network. They'll be doing, giving us a report, giving us some things that we could look at to improve our operations. One of them is the backup that we're doing. Right now, we're what's called archiving into the cloud and they're suggesting that we actually create a duplicate in the cloud rather than just an archive. So there's some things that, you know, they've, they've got going. They have our new firewall configured and we're ready to install that within the next week or so. So I think they have a really good handle on, on our network and, and things. So I'm very comfortable where we're at right now.
Mr. Lotner.
So by, by duplicating everything into the cloud, would that be done at the end of every workday or during the day as it happens?
We do a backup locally, three times a day.
Okay.
And then once a day, that's rolled up into the cloud at night during the wee hours of the morning, so it doesn't affect our internet service.
Okay. So in the worst case scenario, if we were to be attacked again with like the ransomware, we could just let it all go because we would have a duplicate system? It would take some time to download?
It would, it would, well, you could actually spin up a server within the Amazon cloud, the method that they're proposing. So that our server, even if one crashed and burned, if you will, you could spin one up in the cloud, restore it and be live on that server. Not a server that's physically here, but that's actually in the cloud. So with an archive, you have to actually download the data, rebuild the server and get back online. So, you know, there's, that'll be in next year's budget too. So there's some additional cost to doing it that way, but it makes sense to me that that's something I would want to do.
Commissioner Wessel.
Your, your training and security of commissioners and staff was, was, was helpful, but I messed up, as you know.
Yes, sir.
You've been sending me emails to try to get me to click on something to enroll in a refresher course, but I don't dare open your emails.
Smart man. But that was a real refresher course, yeah.
Okay.
So what we're doing there again is we're, we're testing people to see what they, you know, what they've learned over the, the classes and we still have some clickers. And we have it set up now so that any new employee gets added, they have to go through the initial training. Then if they click on it once bad, then they have sort of refresher training. If they click again, they've got another refresher training. So, and I'm monitoring that all the time, so.
Well, you've got us scared.
Yeah, good. That's the whole purpose.
I, I would just like to add, stop sending me those emails that tell me my order has, you know, been placed.
You're going to get a fish email once a week. Beware.
And you did not win a lot in Nigeria, so to let you know that.
Yep.
But it's going well. And once you have a system in place, it'll free up Ron to do more of the internal day-to-day operations. He recently has not had time to do, so it should work out well and going very smoothly. So, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
LEC Roof, if you drive in the back, you see all the supplies are here. We're meeting with the contractor next Thursday, I believe, and they're going to start work here fairly soon. So all the supplies are here and we're on schedule. The Expo is a great event once again this year. I was going to talk some more about it, but April actually is presenting here shortly, but I just want to thank April and her staff for all their work. It's a major effort to put this on and the feedback we received this year was very, very positive. And I want April to have that spotlight to talk about it. And we had another successful kids' fish day. I'm not sure who this girl was here, but she seemed very happy here.
Who would not touch the fish she caught?
Ah, was grandmother with her, helping her?
Yes.
Yeah. Is this the 15th one?
Oh, it's got to be at least 15.
Yeah. Another big crowd there.
And that was they each caught their first fish.
Yeah. So they seem pretty excited there.
We took 17.
17?
We took 17, same number we had last year.
Well, good. Good. And Mr. Gallagher's here for a brief budget update here too. I think he passed on some material here.
Not quite budget, but it's a statutory investment update.
Okay.
Thank you for your time and good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As I said, this is just a mandatory update that I've got to provide you guys. This is the second quarter. If we go to the interest earnings on page two, everything is more or less in line. You're going to notice that revenue sharing is declining. We've only got about a million dollars left in that before we get back in formula with the state and we'll receive our revenue sharing from the state. So we've got about two years left before that happens. So obviously the interest earnings are going to be dropping. We're on pace to well exceed the general funds revenue from last year. Most of that has to do with the cooperation with clerk's office and allowing me to micromanage the cash. And delinquent tax revolving fund will and should meet last year's, you know, we're halfway through and we're on pace. Moving to the next page real quick. Our investment balances, if you look to the far right bottom, 630, 2019 gives you our balances to date. Obviously, there's a significant drop from the general fund. That is not to be alarming. That is normal this time of year because we haven't started our collections or received them from the local jurisdictions. So I've taken a lot of our investments, put them back into the general fund cash so that we can operate. Beyond that, budget stabilization, revenue sharing drop because we just transferred that, and DTR, I added about half a million dollars compared to 1231. So everything is looking good. No concerns on my end.
It's like the trend is down though on two and up on the other.
Yes. Delinquent tax, we've been utilizing that significantly the past three years for our capital projects and that's come from fund balance. And without having that excess cash to invest, we're going to have lower balances. The last page is a spreadsheet that Darcy puts together for me. I apologize for the font size, I can't barely read it. But nonetheless, what it's demonstrating is between the 101, which is general fund, and the 257 on the far left corner there, you'll see the funds, the 283 revenue sharing and the 516 DTR, the different holdings that we have, the corresponding general ledger numbers, the value in them and the maturity dates. You'll recognize in the maturity dates highlighted in yellow that we've only got one that goes beyond 2022. I'm trying to keep everything short with everything that we've got going on and I'm utilizing money markets as much as I can to keep us liquid. To the right column is just our monthly interest payments and tools at the bottom. If you have any further questions or concerns, let me know, but I just wanted to give you a quick update. Thank you.
Thank you, you're very helpful.
And finally, we have a birthday this month. Commissioner Wessel, great photo there.
Older than dirt.
Older, well, I didn't, no, 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 no.
What was it like when dirt was clean then?
So.
Distinguished looking and I had the usual pie, cherry crumb pie. So happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Then that brings us to approval of agenda. I don't see any late additions.
No.
We have all these other presentations.
Oh, I'm sorry, we better do, yes. Senior Services.
We have to.
No, no.
Yeah, we're just.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we've had a good year. I'm getting the feedback. So, yeah, so we're very excited about how things are going in senior services. As you know, I always like to report on the population and what, yeah, sorry, where we're at as our, our senior population continues to grow. So I'd say what can we do? Okay, so that's about our help. Okay. So this first, it's, it's small, I apologize for that. But so this is the projection of where we are in the population for seniors. So if you look at the bottom line, 60-plus, and that is, we, senior services provide services for residents that are 60 years of age or older. And so in 2019, here we are, we have 9,097 seniors. And I think, the second to the last column there, the change between 2010 and 2019, I think is interesting in that we've had a growth of 30% change in population growth from what you see in 2010 till, to now. So if we go to the next page, so this shows the percentage of, of seniors or the different demographics in the county. The last line, 60 years of age or older, we are currently making up in 2019 42% of the population. And so the, the last column is, is talking about the possible change between 2019 and 2022 with the expected 2% change in growth. I also like to note that in some of the other demographic ranges, that there is a negative growth in population. So we're just continuing to see that senior population grow over time. And that will have an impact on the services that we provide and then aging networks in our area as well. So our, our current role in the county, go up on it, yeah. So I'd just like to talk about, we, because we rate 60-plus, I mean, when you're, in your 60s, you know, you, we have, we see very different needs than we would see when somebody in their 80s of what they're looking for. So commonly, we will have seniors maybe in their 60s who are, some are even caring for parents, they're looking for resources, information of how they could care for their, care for their loved ones. Or they're just beginning to look out, look for information and trying to plan ahead. So when they come to an age where they need some additional assistance, they have some idea of where to go and what, what might be needed. When we get into the 75-plus, we see that same information, searching people, requesting information for resources or requesting information of how we might be able to assist them. But 75 kind of is that time where we start to see seniors who are requiring more in-home services in some capacity, whether that be assistance for themselves or assistance in maintaining their home, so that it ranges. And then 80-plus, we see more, more of an intensive where we are doing more of a care management or try to help, really helping to guide, guide either that senior or a loved one during the process of finding services for them, either through our department or connecting with resources in the aging network in the area. So our, I feel, some of our roles that we're providing that, that broad spectrum of services, we're playing, you know, we're connecting people with resources and in our, we, there was services and things that we can provide or with other service providers. And we're doing things to try to help seniors maintain that independence and remaining in their home for as long as possible. And then we also provide that, the in-home services that we can track with service providers to provide, you know, personal care, respite, men management, those type of services. And then we also have our unmet needs program, which is a financial assistance, you know, that ranges from assisting with heating and utility bills to just safety repairs in their home and, and those type of services. So the services are, are in-home services are income and asset based. And so currently, we do the personal care, respite, homemaking, men management. And that would require an application and looking at the income to determine eligibility. And currently, as of today, we have 57 seniors who are receiving one or more of those services. And then the financial assistance, as I was speaking of, we, as of this year, we've had a total of 118 applications so far that have requested assistance. And that could be in combination of the in-home services, but as well as the financial assistance. And so, and that ranges. And what, somebody may just want one thing, somebody may want the gamut and looking for a lot of additional support, so. And then we also facilitate the project fresh coupons and that's a USDA program. So some of the other things that we provide that are not basically income and asset, so our transportation, we help facilitate rides. We, we have volunteers that we work with as well as work, we work with Sharecare of Leelanon, Beta, Comfort Keepers, Mudson, to, to provide medical transportation. And so far this year, we provided 90 rides, help facilitate to have seniors receive 90 rides. Our foot care vouchers, those are vouchers that are sold that, and they can be utilized. We have foot care clinics around the county, various township halls and churches. And then we do have one provider that will go into the home as well if someone cannot get out. And so far this year, we sold 207 of those vouchers. Our medical equipment loan closet, we've combined Sharecare's medical equipment loan closet and ours, so we have a combined effort. And we've serviced 74 people with various forms. So that could be a walker, that could be a wheelchair, a commode, that, you know, it could, it could run the gamut. And then our Freedom Alert, our emergency pendant, we, we sell those through our office. And we also, if, if someone purchases a Freedom Alert through our office, we also will do installations. If somebody has a challenge with their Freedom Alert, we'll go out and, and troubleshoot to make sure that it's, it's running and working well. We coordinate with ARP volunteers, this year we had four, and they completed 204 taxes for seniors in our area. So, which is pretty remarkable for four people, I think. And then we have a Medicare-Medicaid Assistance Program counselor that works in collaboration with area agency and Bruce Barnes is our, our specialist. And so far, we've made 43 referrals to him and that's, that's been a wonderful addition. As we're, if someone applies for, you know, assistance through our office, we can look into see, oh, this person would definitely, could benefit from seeing and talking with Bruce. So we've been able to help a number of seniors in that way. And then we just continue to provide educational opportunities through, you know, programs throughout the year that would be helpful. But I still say, one of our greatest assets is our information and assistance, is the information that we're able to provide when people call and they're looking for assistance and help. Oftentimes, we, we see calls like when there is a crisis, like they, they're in this mode and they're trying to figure out what to do, how to navigate the maze of receiving services or what can be done. So I think that's probably one of our greatest assets and being able to help people through that. It's, it can be a really hard time when you're trying, when you're in need of services, so. And then we try to do a positive, you know, things to get social people out and socializing and to reduce that isolation for a number of seniors. So we have UCR, social outings throughout the year and then our senior expo. So currently, we are penetrating the county in that we sent, our newsletter goes out bi-monthly and we touch about 5,600 households with our newsletter. And so we try to include up-to-date information that's going to help and, and encourage people to be proactive in planning, as well as information that the programs that are upcoming as well. So through our newsletter, through, you know, our services, referrals, we touch approximately 29% of the population in Leelanon County. twenty-nine percent of the population in Lelandon County. So we're very thankful that the meals passed last year and that, and has allowed us to do some additional services and programs. And we've had some changes as well this year, we have a reduction in personnel cost. We reduced the count clerk position, it was a quarter-time position, and so we, that will allow us to allocate dollars towards other services. The meals allow us to, we have the contracted nurse through Share Care of Lelandon. And so that's been a great asset, and being able to have a nurse go out and assist with assessments. The nurses have a medical background that, that oftentimes can pick up on things that some of the social work background, as myself and my staff, don't have. So it's been a great, great addition to have that available. We've also contracted with Share Care for a volunteer program coordination, and we are building that program as we speak and laying a strong foundation for that and hoping that that will be another great addition to helping to serve our, our growing population in, in the area. And then the increased meals allow us to increase our budget for in-home services and the unmet needs and transportation. But, um, so the meals dollars obviously allow us to provide programs, but they allow us to create community connections. And so, you know, we recognize that, you know, we're one department, we're one, you know, we can only do so much in the importance of collaboration and connection with other, other organizations in, within our community and, and the area. And so, can you go one more? So this is kind of a list of, and all the ways that we partner and collaborate with various organizations to, to be able to provide the services to our seniors and to meet those needs. So it's, it's, you know, we recognize the importance that we are able to do that in collaboration with one another. And then the use of volunteers, that's growing. We have, uh, transport, volunteers that provide medical transportation and getting, ensuring that seniors are getting to their doctor's appointments. We're developing the senior volunteer program through, in collaboration with Share Care. And then we use volunteers for our Senior Expo and the tax program and the MAP program. And those, without volunteers, it would, I think, our program wouldn't be as strong. And so we had a very successful Senior Expo, and we had a hundred and ten vendors, which I'm very proud to say was more than what the BASA Expo in Traverse City had, so I was very happy with that. And we had, you ever take probably five hundred and fifty attendees that came to the Expo? So it was a great time. My favorite part is seeing all the, seeing everyone reconnecting with friends and neighbors, this kind of reunion for a number of them, so it's, it's, it's very cool. The vendors are very important, they're sharing information, but I also, so I mean, there's just the exchange of, of information and the exchange between people, it's just a beautiful thing to see, so. We're very proud of it, we thought it was very successful this year. So, that is us. Is there any questions?
Commissioner Lock.
I just was wondering who determines if the nurse is needed when someone, that would be myself or Nancy. The nurse actually assess, does a lot of our reassessments, so after someone has been in our, is receiving our in-home services, we try to do every six months to check in, to either go to the home, have a phone conversation, and so, but a lot of times on the initial time, when someone's calling in for the first time, and sometimes that person may be in crisis, then I determine whether it's important to have the nurse go out, whether it's important that maybe her and I go together in collaboration. It just, every situation is very different, so we take each one individually and determine what's going to be the best.
Is it limited primarily to those individuals that are already participating in the in-home program?
No, it's not. We have a number of seniors, we're seeing a number, I guess, an increase in the number of people that are contacting us and saying, you know, I don't need per se your services, but I do need services, I have the ability to private pay, but I need someone to come out and help me determine what I do need or where to go. And so she's been very instrumental in being able to help with that.
Commissioner Lock.
April, would you have a guess that for just your, your first list of services, which are, which is your personal care, respite, care, homemaking? How, how much, what percentage of your budget would be spent on those main programs before the social?
Yeah, I, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to get back with you today.
So there's fifty-seven clients that are taking?
We do, yep.
I, I had, were you through?
Yes, if you can get back to me on that.
Yes, I can.
What, when you say you're serving twenty-nine percent of the population, is that the senior population?
Yes.
Okay.
Sixty or whatever.
That's a good thought, yeah. Do you know how many number of volunteers that you do have?
Well, so, that was, so we had two for, you know, we have two for transportation, we have a number that assists with Expos, so, I was, you know, an average of about ten. We have Bruce, so thirteen, the AARP, there's, it's around twenty.
So in, in the coordinators working with those twenty to help?
But, and they're also working and recruiting other volunteers throughout the county, yep. So.
So, and then, I was just wondering, how are you doing on your budget?
We're doing very well.
Okay.
Yeah, we're under budget at the point with this time, yes.
Good.
We have no wait lists.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm always so grateful to come here and try to explain in words and sometimes stories and statistics, the impact that your funding has on the residents of Lelandon County, both their quality of life and their health and well-being, and it's kind of hard to put into words what your funding does, but I try my best to do this, so. So I've talked about this before, and many of you have heard this, but just to recap, before I do that actually, I always want to ask, is the feedback too bad?
No.
No, no.
I want to ask you before I start, if there's any questions that you have that are just on the top of your head, to make sure that I cover them in my presentation or I add to them, so before I get started. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So the components of Meals on Wheels is first and foremost, it's, it's the food. Food is medicine. We all know that what we feed our bodies helps to determine what our health is, and especially as, as we get older. So the food has always been an important component, but in the last few years, we, we're, we are trying so hard to make sure that the food can be as, as healthy as possible. Recently, the state changed its standards, always trying to keep up with national standards, dietary guidelines for Americans. So I've been working very hard with the Dietitian Area Agency on Aging, who is our main contact, always over the years, but especially in the last year or so, to make sure that our menu can be as healthy as possible, reducing sodium as much as possible, increasing nutrients as much as possible, always making sure there's variety in entrees, fruits and vegetables, and making sure that the clients love it. Because if they don't love it, who cares how healthy it is? So we, we continually ask for feedback all the time. And every time a client, a client will call and say, I don't really want to say anything, no, please tell me, because if they don't like it, then it doesn't do anything. And every once in a while, we'll change a product, we think it's better, and it's not. It'll be tough, they won't like it, and so I say, well, why are we doing any of this if that happens? So I'm working very hard with, with the kitchen, we work with the Goodwill Inn, to make sure we're continually trying to tweak things so that the food is as good as possible. So that feedback is, is very important. So that's the first and foremost, food is, food is medicine. The second is, we always say it's more than a meal. So it's not just that food is drop shipped to someone's door, which is how some services are. There's some programs where you can literally get it, drop ship to your door in dry ice, and you eat it. But we really believe that one of the most important things we do is, it's our drivers delivering it. So we cover two hundred and eighty-five miles in Lelandon County. And with that, we have two full routes and one partial route that goes from Lelandon County to Grand Traverse County, and those are delivered by staff. We have a very small number of staff in each of our counties. We have about thirty staff and a hundred and fifty volunteers throughout our five counties. But in Lelandon County, it is such a large county, such a rural county, it's difficult, especially in the winter, so we have staff deliver those. And we do have one volunteer route that covers part of Lelandon County and Grand Traverse County. But we want to make sure that we can always get to every client within Lelandon County, and that's why we commit staff to it. And so those staff members see, see the clients every single day, and they deliver the food, they talk about how delicious it looks and how healthy it'll make them when they eat it, but more than, they're in eyes and ears and nose to what's going on with the client. So they will often notice things that the client doesn't even know that they're feeling. Are you feeling okay? Yeah, I'm fine. And they'll notice things the client doesn't even know. They will, we work with emergency contacts to alert them if we see something that we're concerned about. We ask the client's permission to have those emergency contacts ahead of time. So many times, we can prevent issues before they're even an issue, and sometimes we're the only person, I hear this all the time, someone, the other day I was talking to a client, she said, you're the only soul that I see for that day or days at a time. We're like family to them. They put up our, we have kids that make bags and they put it on their refrigerator and things of that sort, so we really get to be a part of their family. So we're a safety check, making sure that, first of all, they're alive and well, we have an emergency process if someone does not answer the phone, to make sure that they're okay, and that it's companionship, and we add to the quality of life just by letting them know that we care. So then the last is, through all this, is really independence, independence with grace and dignity, these individuals, as we all know, that's what we do, we, they've lived their life for other people, their whole life, and now it's our turn to try to give back to them with as much as possible. And many, there's many, many studies that talk about sometimes just meals on wheels is what can enable someone to stay in their home. There's a fine line between being completely independent and not needing any services and needing service and being in a home. And many times, just getting that food every day and that companionship and that safety check can be exactly what they need to stay in their home. And as we know, that's good business. It's good business for you, where you put your funding, because a year of meals on wheels is the same cost as a day in a nursing home or six days in a hospital. And for many people, that's exactly where they would be if they didn't have meals on wheels. So, next slide, please, if you would. So last year, last full fiscal year, which is October seventeenth through September of eighteen, we, we delivered a hundred and ninety-one thousand meals throughout our five counties, and that was to thirteen hundred and fifty-six seniors. In addition to that, we have eighteen congregate sites where people congregate, and we had another thirty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-four meals to sixteen hundred seniors, if you continue on. And then, most importantly, within Lelandon County, our statistics are, I mentioned our routes above, we have four of those congregate sites, Sutton's Bay once a week on Friday, North Port on Thursdays, Elmwood on the fourth Thursday, and then Empire Monday and Tuesday, and when they look at the menu and see something else they like, then they, they meet another day. So in terms of statistics, if you were to compare this to last year when I came, so within Lelandon County, home-delivered meals, fifteen thousand two hundred and ten, that was about an increase of about twenty-three point five percent. I don't have the comparison from last year, because that's just too many numbers, but I have it right here, and it's about twenty-three point five percent increase. Last year was about, it was, it was about twelve thousand three hundred and nine meals. In terms of individuals, this year, we had a hundred and seventeen individuals receive home-delivered meals, that was an increase of about three people. And so what you see is that, you know, there were a few more people, people are getting more meals that, that they need. Some people say, I only need it a couple of days a week, because I have some help. More and more people don't have any help, and so they need it either all the time, five days a week, or we all, we always offer for the weekend. Sometimes people say, well, I have help on the weekend, I have family, but increasingly, they don't, they don't have anybody, so that's what we're seeing. We have seen a decrease in our congregate sites, and since I've been here for eight years, I'm always trying to increase our congregate sites, working with Nancy and April and things of that sort, and I can't quite figure out, you know, what it is. But we've, we've seen a decrease of about eleven percent, not nearly as much of an increase we've seen as home-delivered meals, but there, but there has been, about eleven percent decrease in meals. And so, you know, I don't know if the, the younger seniors, you know, have more things to do, you know, et cetera, but we're continually trying to make sure that we, we outreach to, to the seniors who can come to the congregate sites, et cetera, and be there for people who need home-delivered meals. That, that's a recap of, of who we are and, and what we do. I want to tell you about a few things, and it's not written on here, but a few initiatives that we've been continually trying to do for several years now, continually trying to reach out to, just making sure we have as many diverse funding sources as possible. We don't want to rely on any one funding source. And so we, there's a wide variety of things that we do, but increasingly, healthcare organizations, I've been reaching out to the last several years, and we're finally seeing some culmination of those efforts in partnership with the Area Agency on Aging. So we have a contract with Munson that has been in planning for the last year, that we just implemented about three weeks ago. And it is in collaboration with Michigan State University and Munson and the Area Agency, and what it is, is, the goal is to try to reduce readmission rates. And so there are certain diagnoses of clients, of patients who continually often come back and get readmitted that we've targeted in this study. It's an institutional study that is being evaluated by MSU, where there's a study group that gets evaluated and recruited, and half of the people are going to be in the study group, and half of the people are going to be in the usual care group, which often will still get meals on wheels. And so it's a combination of working with some medically tailored meals from Munson, but us delivering them, because that can be much more valuable, and then having us deliver meals. And the difference is, about thirty percent of our funding comes from federal and state funds, and we need to pay for the rest, this grant is actually paying us. They're not, Munson is not just referring clients to us, they're actually paying us for these meals. And the goal is through the studies to show increase in quality of care and increased saving of money. So I know I delivered to the first client, and it could be in Lelandon County, hopefully some of these three unique clients will be in, in Grand Traverse and Lelandon County. And I have just, I, I delivered to a gentleman, he has chronic pulmonary dysfunction, and he uses oxygen, he's supposed to, he came to the door very out of breath, and I said, how are you feeling? You've just been, you know, just been discharged, and I was a little bit worried about his state, but didn't know what his baseline is, and I'm not a nurse, I'm not assessing that, just how are you doing? He's like, well, I'm okay, he's like, you know, my oxygen is in the other room, at least it's not buried, but I probably should be using it more. I'm like, yeah, okay, yeah, maybe that's a good idea, I'm just listening to him. And the next day I came, he's like, maybe I'll do that. And I said, we just, you know, we just want you to be healthy. Next day I came, he had it on his shoulder, he was so surprised, like, look, I ran my oxygen! And he was all excited. And so just having that personal care, someone to give them feedback, I think can really help. So, always looking at increasing fundraising. We've, we have a very low administrative cost, as Tony knows from being on our board, and Peachy knows from being on our board, but we've hired a fundraiser, a contract fundraiser, just to really get the best practices that are out there. And we're really working at increasing our major DIFT appeals and things of that sort and efforts, and so just looking to diversify as much as possible. Any questions?
Questions. Commissioner Wessel.
I think in, in northern Lelandon County, instead of daily, you do it weekly, or has that changed?
No, no, that's, that, that has never actually been the case in general, so, in, in counties that we serve other than Lelandon County, there are situations where if someone is very far out, we will deliver a weekly supply of meals. In Lelandon County, I have to be honest, and it's been this way since my predecessor was here, Vibrot, for thirty-two years, because of the commitment that Lelandon County has always made to Meals on Wheels, we are dedicated to never having a whole entire frozen route. And so now, sometimes depending upon someone's needs, maybe they have a lot of doctor's appointments, maybe they're in dialysis, they can't, we, we don't leave the meals if they're not home. Like the drop shipping I talked about from other companies. We don't, one, because we want to make sure the food is safe, and two, part of our service is checking on people and making sure they're okay. So we have a policy that we don't leave the meals, if someone has appointments, we work with them to get them the meals when they're there, but if someone has so many appointments, they can't be there, sometimes it's convenient for them to receive a weekly supply of meals, or maybe three days a week, that we will leave for them. But it's always based on their needs, and we won't have a route like that in Lelandon County.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lock.
Thank you. Last winter, there was a, I received a phone call from someone who was supposed to have received their meal, and there was a cancellation of the Meals on Wheels that day, they, they weren't bringing it because of the snowstorm, I believe. So I said, well, you know, that's, we didn't really deal with that, they should contact you. But my question is, do you try to prepare for that now? So you can get them two meals the day before? Okay.
So, well, what, what we do is, we prepare for that very much in advance. And so what we do is, we have a whole emergency process plan, a whole emergency management system, and what we do is, in the fall, first of all, we ask clients if they would like a box of shelf-stable meals. So it's, it's six meals to start with in a box, and that is so that if they lose power, the meals are fine. And as we know, a few years ago, we lost And as we know, a few years ago, we lost lots of power. And so in November, that's what we do to prepare for that. And we tell them, our policy, and it's usually meals on wheels across the country, if the schools are closed because of weather, then we close. And it's where the schools are located in our kitchen. So it's actually Grand Travers County is where that policy is. And that's to keep everybody safe. So that we don't, we don't want the drivers on the road being in harm's way, et cetera. So what we do is we prepare for that ahead of time by giving them shelf-stable meals. This past year, because there were so many snow days.
So many, maybe that was it.
Then we ask them again, "Would you like another box of shelf-stable meals? Or would you like some additional frozen meals to have on hand?" So when, now sometimes people forget. And sometimes when they call in, we say, "How are you on food?" And we have had snowplow companies, four-wheel drives, et cetera. We made many deliveries this year, even though we were closed. If anybody called and was at all concerned, we would get them meals. And so we often did that. And sometimes when we were closed a couple of days, we called every single one of our clients just to check in and make sure they're okay. If we didn't hear from them, we'd call their emergency contact, just to make sure they're okay. Yeah, so we always try to, so I'm sorry that particular client kind of maybe forgot. And hopefully, maybe they called us, and if they needed food, we probably delivered it to them.
And it may have just been the social contact that they were craving too.
Exactly. And that's why we have many of our drivers that call the clients on days we're closed just to check in with them. Because oftentimes, that's what they enjoy even more than the food. Any questions?
Would you briefly explain for us your policy when you have a driver that gets to a home and they get no response? And they anticipate that the client is within the structure?
Yes, okay. So again, we have a whole emergency policy that's laid out for all of our drivers. So the first thing is, we knock, according to whatever they want us to do, knock and lock in or just knock. If they don't come to the door, we knock again, you know, et cetera. If it's unlocked, then we will enter the home, announcing ourselves and make sure we don't startle anybody. Every time we enter a home and it's unlocked and someone isn't there, I take a deep breath because you never know what you're going to find. We look in all parts of the house. We want to make sure that the client hasn't fallen. And many times, we've seen someone fall, in between a wall and a bed or in the bathroom or et cetera. So we look and we see if they have fallen somewhere. If they have, our policy is not to pick someone up, we call 911. We want to make sure that they're okay, that they haven't fallen and hurting themselves. Our policy is we stay with them, we call 911. We usually call someone else to come get the rest of their meals to deliver so that we can stay there until help arrives. So that's our policy if we find them. If we don't find them, then we look around and based on the volunteers' experiences, then we start to see, hmm, does this look unusual? The dog's barking, the TV's on, this is not usually the case, what's going on? Do they have, sometimes people drive it very infrequently and oftentimes they shouldn't. Is the car in the driveway? Is it not in the driveway? Is there something awry? So then in that situation, either the driver or they'll call us, we'll call an emergency contact and see if something looks not right. Have they gone off somewhere? Have they traveled off? Have they been forgetful? You know, what's going on? So we will contact someone. Now, if the door's locked, then what we instruct people to do is we look around every window. We try to make sure it doesn't look like we're breaking in, but this is our policy. Look in every window, make sure if we can see something, try every door, every window, et cetera, to see if we can see them in. And again, if something looks unusual, we'll call an emergency contact. We leave a note that says, "We tried to, please call us to let us know that you want us to deliver a meal next day," and that so we make sure they're okay. So sometimes we may call, first of all, we call. First, if the door's locked, we call because sometimes they can hear the phone and knock the door. But if all that happens and we don't find them, call an emergency contact. And oftentimes, we've called Sherborkovich's office or somebody's office to do a well check. We don't know that there's an emergency, but we're just concerned about somebody. We'd rather err on the side of caution than not.
And that's what I was looking for, if you guys did welfare checks.
And what we've found from law enforcement is oftentimes, people would rather us call them and make sure that they're okay than not.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
The next one, Mr. Schluter.
Good morning. Annual handout.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Schluter. I'm the Executive Director of the Area Agency on Aging of Northwest Michigan. We are a 10-county primarily healthcare-related organization for our older population, 16 and above, but also our disabled communities at 18 and above if they are of nursing home eligibility. So that started in the early 90s. Before I get into any of the details, and I do have just a short presentation, I do want to get a couple, give a couple of very important shout-outs. One of them being from Eric Lind, who has served on our board. He also was an appointment earlier from this commission. He, in my eyes, epitomizes what an executive director needs in a board member to do their job. Not a rubber stamp, but somebody super involved and questioning, also extremely supportive and understanding, goes to great lengths in finding out what the program's about. So I just want to thank him again. I did last year, but I even added a little bit of frosting this year because he's really a super board member. I also want to thank Beth Wagner, who is your current representative. She's been very involved, and she's going to be a great, she is a great addition to it. Is that me?
We think it's us, but we don't know why.
I used to play lead guitar in college.
Does it sound like that?
I'm thinking maybe it could be that your battery on yours is right next to the microphone. Commissioner Retta.
My battery?
Yeah, you know, the battery from this. And they might pick it up from there. Let's just try that.
I also want to thank April and Lisa, who are strong partners in everything that we offer. I mean, we have determined a number of years ago that our Commissions and Councils on Aging are really the front door to everything all of us do. The people in your counties go to that organization. And we all work together to make sure what's coming out of those Commission and Councils on Aging is the best possible services. So they, it is our responsibility and also our joy to establish strong relationships with all of the contractors we work with, in particular, the Commission on Aging in each of the 10 counties. We also have another board, a Board of Advisors, which I call our Workhorse Board. And Meredith Goodrick serves on that. She's from the Empire area. And she's also the Executive Director of a large hospice organization in the Grand Travers area. That group, two to three of them, we send on a regular basis to Lansing with the advocacy information to talk to our legislators about. And they do that monthly. So they're really right up to snuff on what we need as aging organizations to get our job done and be effective. So the Board of Advisors, although they don't set policy, our Board of Directors, our policy board listens very closely to the information that they are given. And I also want to thank Mr. Janik, Ted Janik, for all the effort he's done over the years, not only this, but housing efforts and everything. He's also, he's always very available. And Laura Evans, too, who is your administrative people who organized all this stuff. They have a lot on the pipe, as you all do, so I appreciate all of their efforts. The packet I gave you, real quickly, the second page, that's our brief annual report. I'll let you all read that. You should have received an electronic copy already, but there is a, this is a hard copy. And then you also have one copy of our 104-page annual implementation plan, which I'm sure you all read thoroughly and everything, probably scanned through it. I'm sure some of you have, and hopefully you'll get through it. It's, some of it's boilerplate from year to year, and some of it's brand new where we're headed. It's a three-year plan, and every subsequent year, we have to prepare for the remaining years. And then the third year, we start planning for the next three years. So we're always in a cycle of a three-year plan. It's the, we're told what to put in it, and then we're allowed to also put new ideas and things that we want people to see. That last booklet I handed out a couple of years ago, it's called "Services Cost and Difficulties in Rural Michigan." That came out of our Area Agency on Aging a few years back because our State Commission Representative called me and said, the city of Detroit had presented to them, and they wanted the formula changed. About $5 to $6 million of our funding comes under a formula for the state of Michigan. And Detroit had lost several hundred thousand people in population, and so their formula was going to change, and they were going to lose $2 to $3 million. So we put this report together because unless you live Grand Rapids North, unless you live in the world of providing services in rural areas, you don't understand the difficulties and how different it is from delivering. We all have our issues. In fact, Detroit's very close friends over. So long and short of it, the commission looked at the report and said, "No, we're not going to change the formula." We worked with the commission to change their, they reduced Detroit's funding over a period of, I believe, five years rather than overnight. And then I updated it this year because Detroit came back because they had lost another $160,000 and wanted the formula looked at again. The formula will get massaged, but one thing that is very strong in that is the rural and the mileage factor, because that won't change. We cover 5,000 square miles up here. And that's, we drive, as our volunteers know, drive many, many, many miles to provide services for one or two residents. So, and that's not going to change. Hopefully, that formula will stay the same. A couple of the, you'll see in the middle column, just under $560,000 came to Leland County through efforts through our organization, that's with care management and also with our Medicaid waiver program. Those are healthcare-related people, or programs helping people stay in their home as long as possible. And then we also transition them back and forth into nursing home settings or wherever it's important. Our goal is to keep people at home as long as possible. For the cold reason, it's cheaper. For the warm reason, it's what most people want. And so that's, it really, if you can do that, that's the best of all the world. So I've only known, I've been, 33 years I've been at the organization, and I've only known one person that said I'd rather be in a nursing home. And actually, they were referring to an assisted living, and his wife had passed away. And like many men, they really didn't know how to do much at home when the chief, the bottle washer and boss was no longer there. And it was a good, I was very impressed with him actually to see that he was not capable of supporting himself at home. And so it was, but that's one. In 33 years, most people say, "No, I'd rather stay at home." And by 2021, one in three in our area will be 60-plus in average age. Right now, 50% of our counties have, they're, over 50% of their population is of the age of 60 and above. Northwest Michigan is a rapidly aging area. Along with rapidly aging, we're also relatively healthy organization. So we're trying as organizations and working with individual counties to work on making sure people have the tools to take care of themselves and also provide the new and better services to help them stay at home. Whether it be, in a lot of cases, it's just programs such as Matter of Balance and nutrition programs and caregiving programs, especially with spouses. We run multiple programs for creating competent caregivers and other kind of caregiver training programs. Helping people take care of themselves is a big part of what we do. Over the past eight years or more, 10 years, we've become licensed for programs developed in universities and the medical schools that are, come with their own curricula that we work with and we have to stay closely tied. But they're proven how to help people stay at home. So that is always evolving in our offices, in our efforts. In 2024, the entire baby boomer population will be age-eligible for services. That's, those are people who will be eligible for your millages, 60 and above. That's a big wave coming. That doesn't mean they're all going to need your village dollars, but that's going to be there. So that's something for all of you to be aware of. And as April and Lisa both pointed out, it is incredibly cheaper to keep people healthy and at home. And so that's, with this baby boomer population, we want to make sure that we're right on top of that. So two of the big things that we're dealing with right now, three things actually. One is economic viability, because we're just like you all, we're all trying to do more with less every year. Our funding resources, private and public, don't keep up with the demand. We have a lot of people whom we could identify and do identify that need services. We don't have the resources, we do the best we can. And we're also working very hard on keeping everybody as healthy as possible, as I explained. So those are two big focuses. The other, and I'll close with this and then answer any questions. The other big thing that I've covered the last couple of years, doesn't keep me awake at night, but it makes me read a lot, is what's going on with the healthcare programs nationally, which are turning to private for-profit entities, health plans, to operate programs similar to ours. Now, that's not good or bad or whatever, it's just something that's taking place. Our job is to make sure that if Michigan in particular turns in that direction and they decide to take Medicaid waiver or some of these other programs and give that funding to a health plan, that the health plan knows what needs to be done. Because for 40 years, we've been boots on the ground in the homes of these people. We know what they need. And as, again, April and Lisa eloquently said, we look at people, we touch them. We walk in their door, we know what they want. So the health plans are slowly moving and understanding who we are. Many of them didn't even know Area Agencies on Aging existed. They're in Michigan, they know we exist now, and they're starting to play. But they also have a profit margin they want to be, so. We understand that. I've been a private business owner, my wife and I, and we understand profit, and we understand that. We just want to make sure that in the profit world and in the service world, that the service standards that we have set, that we do not go less than where they are now. And in fact, get better as we get better. And that's the message that we are giving regularly to our health plans that we're meeting with. And so we're hoping the state of Michigan, which they have, is supportive of the mission of all the Commission on Aging and the Area Agencies on Aging, and make sure that we are part of any of their policies and plans moving forward with our for-profit healthcare entities. With that, I will answer any questions that you might have.
Did I read somewhere in your report that you sent to us that there's going to be a structural change in your organization?
There is, that's why I have this here. Yes, I will be, my contract is over September 30th. Thank you for bringing that up. And I will be retiring, I've been there 33 years. We have my replacement, she's actually, Heidi Gustin worked for us for about five years. She's a planner from the hospital, Munson, actually, for a long time. And they have, she has her management team in place. We actually had the top, myself and my number-one person, Denise Blackmire, retired at the end of April, which is a huge hope, because she managed all of the nurses, social workers, and all of our federal and state programs. So we hired somebody from outside to come in, and everybody's coming at the speed. I recognize that it's probably best for me to get out of there so they're not, well, what does Bob think? We should check with Bob, because at some point, Bob's not going to be there. And I certainly don't know everything. In fact, 99% of the staff know more than I do about all this stuff. So August 9th, I will be heading up to Canada with my wife to take a week or so off, and I'll be available for everybody. Yes, and it's been a real joy working with all of the people from Leland County serving them in this capacity.
Well, that note, that was a great question, Mr. Rutter. A couple of weeks ago, Bob called me in his conference room, in his office. They were looking for some unique photos from every county. Something that would not just be the standard Leland County photo, but something to represent each county. And as you know, Bob is a native son of Leland County. So I'm thinking, how can we do this? And I started thinking, how can we honor Bob also 33 years of service? And I started thinking, how can we honor Bob also 33 years of service? I personally known him for 30 some years. My wife used to work with him and holds him deep regard. So I've been looking around and I found this. It's the Leland Peninsula Ventures Association. We have 27 riders in the county, but there'll be a plaque put in here that has either Robert or Bob Schluter, depending on how you want it. So in fact, that you're a native son of Leland County and we're going to get this to hang in the office in honor of you.
Well, thank you.
If you've seen us, I think we all love Bob. Great company. So we'll get the plaque and we'll drop him off at your office.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bob.
So I'm part of that statistics I just talked about too, you know. Thank you all again so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then that brings us to approval of agenda laid additions. Commissioner West.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So then that brings us to public comment. Please come forward. Morning.
Good morning. My what am I? Can we turn that off?
No, can't turn off.
Oh, yes. Okay. Good morning. Because septic is on the agenda way later on, I have a little something I know you've heard.
Could you please identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dana Getzinger.
Thank you.
So I'm here to talk about septic and I hope you can hear me well. Why we need rules and regulations. Considering who we are, we mostly realize we need rules and regulations. I think speed limits are more than a suggestion and they're set to keep us safe from ourselves and others. As a retired kindergarten teacher, I had the privilege each September 17th to help the children determine our room constitution. You've all heard the phrase, everything I need to know, I learned in kindergarten. As a kindergarten teacher, I felt that I learned more each day from the children in my charge than in many of my college classes focusing on the theory of education. On these magical September Constitution days, I was frequently surprised. My main objective was to empower the children to realize that kindness and working and playing with gusto was our main mission. I always began with a question, why are we in school? I was taught to ask that question at least five times. The answers begin with, my mom drove me. And after the fifth time, hopefully, they would say something like, we are here to learn how to treat each other and how to learn so that we can be successful later in life. Some kids were really pleased with let's treat everyone with kindness and you can't say you can't play. Other kids were more pragmatic and wanted listed in the rules, you can't bite, you can't tease, you can't push. One year, a child even said, you can't do a double wedgie. Those kids are never satisfied with just be kind. They wanted step-by-step instructions. I had to teach them that being kind meant do no harm. I feel the same is true with our current situation concerning septic regulations. Let's ask at least five times, why do we require a septic ordinance? One, we are human. We require rules to safeguard one of our essential needs. Two, more people live here than ever before and that number is not going to go down. Three, all of the 83 rivers in Michigan that were tested by Michigan State have been found to have human enteric bacteria and there is more found where there are large numbers of septic systems nearby. Four, groundwater does not stand still. It does not adhere to property lines and your neighbor's waste can end up in your well. Safeguarding our water for future generations is our job. And there's one more reason about why we might want a septic ordinance. And we have a small patch of beach, about 80 feet on the bay. And you all know the water is very high this year. Well, a couple of weeks ago, my daughters and granddaughters were down at our beach. And in the beach wall, this is what they found. This pipe going into the bay. I'm not sure it's a septic pipe, but it sure does not look like a good thing to be going into the West Bay. So when it comes time for the septic ordinance, could you help me by picking up the bag because I don't want this to be on the floor?
Can you just pose, I'll get a picture of that.
This is my other neighbor. And my grandchildren sometimes say to me, Grandma, why does the beach smell so poopy? This is my other neighbor who has 450 feet along the bay, just put in a new septic field. I'd like I'd like to give her a big round of applause.
My house was built in 1870. We have a reason. Look, we have six grandkids.
Six grandkids. And what they found was a dry well. So when it comes time for septic.
Five minutes left.
Please.
Thank you. Any other? Please.
That was really kindergarten chillicothe.
I'd like to compliment the previous speaker on her presentation. That was very well. Mine's going to be short. We need the five minutes. My name is Dennis Boucher, Elmo Township. And I was encouraged by reading the agenda when I saw the septic systems inspections come forward. I think this is really necessary. I'm proud of this board and those of you that are progressive enough to want this issue solved, I admire you and I thank you for that. I was personally had a bad experience with my first house on the lake with a septic tank that was within pits spitting distance from the lake. It always worried me and then I had it inspected and found out that during everything was bad. So in the result, we had there was a mound installed later on, mound system. So I think it's it's beyond the point for those of you who might think this is a private property rights issue, not when you're next to my house and your stuff is falling in underground in my property. It ceases to be a private property issue. I just want to emphasize that point and hope that we have some good successful discussions on this matter and that we come to a really great solution. Thank you very much.
Please come forward.
I'm Deb Shaw. I really didn't make a plan to speak, but you know, there's such a rush of advocacy that are all about clean water, talking about our bay and our lakes and our rivers. And really, you know, what it's from the ground going out that us homeowners should and can control. And I think that as Dana was saying, that we need the help of all those that are you can make, let you know, make it a mandatory that there are restrictions and, you know, reasons for us to keep it keep it right and get it right. So anyway, I think we need the help of the community, the government in our areas. Okay. Because we love our water, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other public comment? Please.
Good morning. My name is Doug Whitley and I live in Leland County. I too wish to speak on the septic inspection issue. I think it's a really simple question. Does the county fully appreciate, respect and honor a responsibility for assuring clean water and guaranteeing public health concerns over water quality and will it be met? Every property owner has a responsibility for the watershed that they use, that they touch or they may affect. If there is a problem, it must be fixed. I support an inspection requirement. Allowing inspection only as property ownership changes seems responsible and reasonable, even if it's not a comprehensive approach and may cause an excessively long approach to cleanliness. It is nevertheless a positive step and better than continuing to ignore unsanitary leakage. Without inspection, how does anyone know or catch a problem? We all know there are problems. The county should accept this responsibility for securing and maintaining a clean environment, especially where clean water is concerned. It is something that this county should take pride in accomplishing. I thank you for your attention and your kind consideration.
Say your name again, please.
My name is Doug Whitley.
Thank you.
W H I T L E Y.
Thank you. This isn't a time for clapping. Next, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda. Do you want to take a five-minute break at this time before we go to the agenda?
Not to.
Okay. We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll move on to the agenda. We now move on to our agenda. The first item is the probate and family court. We have a reimbursement request.
Yes, I I'm here to answer any questions you have. I don't have any time prepared handout right now. I think you've got the bill. So if there's any questions I can answer, that's what I'm here for.
Is it, you know, normally we don't see this type of contract. Is this is this is this?
We on the contract or the?
Oh, this is reimbursement. I'm sorry.
So just to summarize, and it wasn't, I think, an issue of the way it was spent is that the money was going just to one school district. And I think the question the commissioners had, if we're going to do it for one, we should do it for everybody. That I think is a concern that the commissioners had, that there are two requests reimbursement for one school district. And I believe you said the other school districts are picking up the cost. So the commissioner was just questioning whether we should, if the funds are there, as you said, they are through a grant, should all schools be eligible for this to help them with their finances or should we not do this for anybody since everybody else is paying for it except for one local district that is asking us to reimburse up for the cost?
Well, my understanding, and Teresa Larson's here, so she can, you know, help to answer this, but each school did things a little differently. This this isn't the same Girls on the Run program that we've had in the past. And so some schools provided their own coach and paid for things individually and others didn't have any cost. Some of the groups didn't even participate in the track club event, which was the part of the Bay Shore Marathon. And so there was quite a bit of variation from from school to school in terms of how it was how it was done. This money is 100% basic grant money. There's no 50-50 split. We are, you know, given $15,000 each year and that's directly through our into our prevention programs. And this is, you know, kind of a primary prevention program which helps to build self-esteem and confidence. They operate as a team, so they're trying to be supportive of each other. It's enforcing healthy lifestyles, all those kinds of things.
Commissioner Russell.
I I would like to move that we approve this payment as presented. And then I'd like to speak to that if somebody second said it.
I'll second.
Seems to me when the judge approves and the probate administer approves and the staff person has given approval to do it, we need to support that. And so I hope we will be done with this.
Commissioner Law.
Oh, I I agree with what Commissioner Russell is saying. As we stated, we were looking for uniformity. So if there's other other teams and other coaches at the other schools, shouldn't we be paying it across the board?
If if they were to approach us and ask us, I would see how that would fit in. I'm sure we probably could.
But this is in support of this is in support of our Catholic school in the county. So this is helping out our Catholic school. And I think we just have the one Catholic school in in this county. So that's great, all the money that you can funnel into funnel into that school through whatever programs that you can. I think that that would just be great.
I think initially it said Girls on the Run and I thought that program had handed. That was one of the reasons that I brought the question up. But now it's changed to prevention, which which makes more sense to me. But and it does, I mean, I guess I'm wondering, because I know like Pathfinders of Private School and Leland School and all of them, you know, do do the girls that are being helped here, have they been to the in the court system?
This is actually for both boys and girls and they're, no, they haven't been in the court system, but as prevention, that's basically what we're trying to, you know, divert, trying to help them stay out of the court system by helping them to develop some healthy habits and.
So it's really open to any person? It's not not even specifically for anybody who's been in the court system, but there's not even one of them that's in the court system?
I don't know if there are any of them that have been in the court system. It's a fairly younger group. I think they're in the third to fifth grade age range, so I don't think any of them have been. But we do have kids that are in our prevention programs that are are that young, but I don't know that any of these in particular are.
Okay. Are there any other questions or anything? All right. So this will be on the payment of this these items. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you for your clarification on that. I think we were a little bit confused when this came before the board last week or last month.
You're welcome. Thank you for your support.
All right. Then that brings us to the contract, bed rental agreement. Commissioner, I'd like to.
You know, this this I don't remember this type of thing coming up before. Is this different?
This is completely different. We have never had this specific type of contract for any kind of court order placement before. I mean, we have other kids in placement right now in similar type of programs and there's not this type of contract in place. So why this particular agency has this particular process, I believe, as I indicated, their Ottawa County's clerk of council is the one suggesting that they have this signature process. So and this has been reviewed by Leland's clerk of council as well. It's just a different formality.
Okay. Does this mean that if we agree to this contract, we have to pay for four months?
It all depends on.
Whether that person's in there for if he's it comes out in two weeks or or.
All right. It's estimated length of stay. If the child is progressing quicker than they anticipate, they could be out of the program sooner.
But we would still have to pay for the four months? That's what I read it, no?
No, no, it's all based on a per diem.
I know it's $169 a day, but okay. I was just concerned. Commissioner, right?
I would recommend to the board of commissioners to approve the contract between the Ottawa County Juvenile Detention Center and the Leland Family Court for placement of court ordered youth placed in their facility pending council review and approval, which I believe has been taken care of.
Yes, they've reviewed the contract and did some minor amendments to it and it's been approved.
Okay, thank you. Second.
Commissioner Law.
I just had one one question on your your first whereas. Do you have that in front of you?
First which?
Your first whereas. I just didn't quite understand what what it was trying to say because it says, I just went off of it.
Okay, okay. In the contract, okay.
So it says, whereas the Ottawa County Juvenile Detention Center Detention Center is owned by Ottawa County, but it's. is owned by Ottawa County, but is a court, not county operated county juvenile detention facility.
It's a, you're questioning?
So is it, wait, why is the court? It, it is a court, not county operated county juvenile detention center. So is it a court program? Is that what?
The, um.
I, I suppose it worded that way.
Right. The court is the one that operates the facility.
Okay, so it's worded correctly. So the county, county ought to be in there twice and, okay.
Right.
It just seems kind of redundant to me, but if it's correct, then we, I don't think.
I don't want to start our own program.
I certainly am not suggesting we start our own program either. In fact, we're probably lucky to have one this close, but it's $160 a, a day.
That's.
$195.
Sometimes they're over 200.
Yep.
So this actually is a little lower.
And.
And that is also child care fund reimbursed at 50%.
Obviously, excuse me, obviously, we're not looking for the, the names of the person, but what is the age and, and what is the situation as much as you can tell us about? Why this person has to be placed clear down there at this cost?
Uh, this particular youth has been under our jurisdiction for several years. I believe her most recent incident involved stealing alcohol from a Walmart store and ending up in a hotel room where she ended up jumping out of the second floor window of the hotel room. And father is doing the best he can, mother is pretty much nonexistent, so she is a person in need of a lot of, um.
A lot of different situations going on. Okay. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Russell.
Do we have other facilities in northern Michigan that can provide these same services that either we currently utilize or are we adding another one because of the numbers or the availability of beds or the availability of service?
It's sometimes all about what you just said. We do have other facilities such as Eagle Village. There's programs throughout the whole state. This is a fairly new program that we haven't tried before, and it specializes in treatment of girls. So, you know, and it, and it would meet the needs and that they had the beds available for this particular individual.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Russell.
Joe, what is the vetting process that you use when you embark on new program services?
Well, we, we call them up. I know, first of all, they have beds available, and, you know, we have a full file cabinet full of all the brochures and information about every, every facility in the, in the state and some out of state. And so we, we do our best, you know, do diligence in terms of research in it and determining the appropriateness of it. So, you know, this, I'm familiar with this particular program too from some of those state conferences that I go to where they have done presentations and talked about the program. I know the county director of Ottawa County as well, and, you know, we have heard, heard speaking about the program and the success, success that they've had. So it's, it's not a science. You know, we, we send kids to these programs. We do the best we can and, and keep our fingers crossed and hope that they, they gain something from it and come back to the community and, and don't repeat some of the same mistakes.
Thanks. If I may ask one more question, what is the age range for this facility?
Typically, they're like 13 to 17.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
So that brings us to the area agency on aging, fiscal year 2020 annual implementation plan resolution. Commissioner Russell.
Move to approve Lelandau County Resolution Number 2019 for the multi-year plan of the area agency on aging.
Second.
Right. Let's do that again then. I don't believe this was written by Lelandau County. This resolution, no. But we are going to vote on it anyway.
So is it, has it been or will it go to our attorney?
Has it gone to our?
I don't honestly know. I'll double check that by next week.
This is pretty standard.
Yeah, I think it's the same one with you every year, but we'll double check that.
I'm trying to remember the last time it was actually reviewed. That was my question as to why.
We'll double check that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero, and this will be a roll call next Tuesday. Thank you. Then that brings us to the sheriff's office, the renewal agreement for animal control services.
Morning.
Good morning.
Well, myself and Deputy Calc Secretary here to answer any questions you have. This is a request to renew the annual, the animal control service agreement. We have a state grant travel ban for three-year period. No wording has been changed in the contract or in the agreement, and it's been reviewed by the corporate council. I can tell you, from a monetary standpoint, the tribe pays $5,000 a year for us to handle their animal control needs. And it averages maybe 14, 15 hours of Wayne's time a year and maybe top 120 complaints, but Wayne can talk about that if you'd like.
Commissioner Service.
I moved to recommend the sheriff, excuse me, the Board of Commissioners approve a renewal of the agreement for animal control services between the County of Lelandau and the grant travelers banned of Ottawa and Chippewa Indians until September 30th, 2022.
All right. Did you want to speak to that at all? No?
No.
Commissioner Law.
Thank you. I was wondering, Wayne, if you could speak a little bit to what social media is doing for animal control in this county? Because if you follow it at all, you'll see that, that people are catching pets and they're putting it out there and pets are being reclaimed. Is there, is there a lesser amount being placed on us for that because of that?
Are you referring how that would impact this contract?
Mm-hmm. No, no, I'm speaking overall of your animal control, so.
Just in general. In general, it's, it's an asset. It assists my job greatly, and especially when you're talking about lost pets or found pets, identifying owners. We, we live in a very blessed community in which there's not a lot of just stray animals out there. They belong to somebody. Somebody's looking for them, and social media assists greatly in being able to just get that out. The number of shares, it, it's explosive.
Yeah, the support is overwhelming.
We've had animals that I've been unsuccessful in obtaining the ownership information, put it on social media, five minutes later I did a phone call.
Good. That's good. It's a plus.
It is a plus.
Okay.
Any other questions? I was wondering if this contract goes on to the 2% funding or is this exclusive of the 2% funding? It's exclusive of it. Okay. Commissioner Service.
I just want to say thanks for the great job you do. I know I've been at our vet clinic when you've arrived with a pet that was lost and seen firsthand how you go to extraordinary measures to try to find that owner. So thank you.
Appreciate that.
I'll echo that, and Wayne is probably our busiest deputy, and he gets a ton of animal complaints, and he does a fantastic job dealing with the animals and the people. Really lucky.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That brings us to number four, the register of deeds and the waiver of insurance requirement policy.
I have a call, so I hope you can hear me okay. So Corporate Service Company is one of the recording companies that we're working with, and they have come back a couple times with their agreement, and they do not feel like they need to follow the insurance policy. Corporate council reviewed it, and they just asked that I come and ask for a board waiver for it. We're not paying them anything. They're going to pay us recording fees. They're just like the post office or the FedEx or UPS, just delivering documents to us via email.
Who from corporate council reviewed this?
Um, Sarah.
Did you get anything in writing from her stating that?
Um, in email, I have.
Could we get a copy of that? Because I think that's important.
Okay.
Because usually if they do that, they put in writing what their concerns are. If they don't have any concerns, that's fine, but I just want to make sure that we are protected.
Okay.
That they are fully in agreement with us.
Okay, I can get that to you.
You can get that to us by next Tuesday.
Yeah, I can do that.
We'll do that.
Yeah. It might not have been directly to me, it might have been to Phil. I'm not really sure. But I can get it to you.
I'll make sure that they agree with this.
Okay.
Because sometimes not that this company does, we have a lot of companies that are concerned about insurance policies, and their legal counsel don't agree, but most time corporate counsel has not agreed to make changes. Now, this may be the unique situation. But I don't remember getting anything from Sarah or anybody saying that they agreed to.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you've been tagged on a lot of the emails.
So I think that's important to get this protected or something.
Okay.
And I would ask that we just move this forward to next week without approval or?
Sure. Sounds great. That'd be my motion. Move this forward to Tuesday night.
Yes. We have a second.
Okay.
Now, does anyone want to speak about it? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So we will move that forward, but we have not approved it.
Okay. I know I got another agreement back today, so I need to.
And that brings us to the online fees.
Yeah, with the, with the new software, it gives us the opportunity to change the look of our searching and how we charge and stuff. So I know Laurel gave you a sheet that shows our current fee schedule, how we, how we collect the money, and I knew proposed, we'd like to try to do three different options. We've done a lot of research with a lot of other counties and the software they use and the new software company that we are going with. We checked with a lot of the other counties that use that same software, trying to figure out the best way to charge people with not being too crazy, but yet, you know, feel like we're, we're being fair. And so one of, you know, everything, all names will be a free search, but if they are going to need to print something, our first option is we're talking about $5 for 15 minutes. Person can go on for $5, search for the deed, print it for a dollar per page, and then with the new credit card company, they're going to charge a minimum of $2 to use the credit card. Or for like an attorney who is going to take a little longer than 15 minutes, or a title company who doesn't, doesn't do a lot of searching Lelandau County, you know, charge them $15 for a day, and then they can, you know, pay a dollar per page for all the documents that they want, and then with a minimum $2 credit card fee. Or like our title, title searchers that do a lot in Lelandau County, charge them a monthly fee of $200 plus a dollar per page that they want to print, and then they will also have to pay the 3% credit card fee. I just feel it's like maybe better to give three options than the two that we've had since, I think, 2005, when Dr. Mills went online for the first time, way before me, so.
Commissioner Anderson.
Will residents still have the option to come here and use the computer for free?
Absolutely. They're, they're going to get charged a dollar per page, but they won't be charged.
If they want hard copy, but they can come here and use the computers in your department for free, just like they always have.
Absolutely.
So we're really adding a charge for the online access for the convenience of those people just doing it from their.
From home. From home or their office, correct. Yes.
Commissioner Service.
In terms of the online access, is, is there an increase in staff time in, in keeping the online up to date? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to, to look at, have you examined your staff's time and, and what would warrant an increase?
Um, really, the only, the only time that it takes us is our monthly subscribers. Instead of going online and paying it, they send us a check. So you have to log in, add the money, make sure that it's for a month. It takes a few minutes, but it's not a whole lot of time, and it wouldn't be any different really, really with this. And actually, right now, for like the monthly, we're charging $300, but they're getting unlimited copies. And I've been told that some companies really print a lot of copies, and statute says that we can charge a dollar per page. So we thought, well, let's lower it a little bit and use that 200 to kind of help maintain the website, to provide the enhanced digital online, but yet charge it on the dollar per page also for any documents that they print that statute says we can charge them. And that would be kind of like what the $5 and $15 would be also, just, you know, to help pay for the support, you know, that you're on, you know, for having it online.
But you don't really have any added costs that you're trying to defray?
Well, except for now, Tyler is going to be hosting that instead of the county, so there are going to be some, some additional fees for them hosting. So just to help cover. Hopefully pay for it, so.
We're looking for a motion?
Yes.
I'm going to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the new proposed fee structure for online copies to the register of deeds office effective when the new software and website go up live.
Support.
Commissioner Anderson.
I would like to have you give us some feedback after this goes for a while, you know, six months, a year, whatever.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't mind charging for copies.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a little hesitant to charge residents to use the online system. So I'm just, I'm going to ask you, just come back and tell us.
I was going to say I'd like to come back and, or relook at it in like six months and just see where we're at, and.
You know, that, that, that's my only concern with this is that, you know, we're charging the taxpayers that pay us.
Let me tell you, Branch Rivers County has a company called Fiddler, and just to search a name, they, they charge $6.95 just to search one name, and then it's a dollar per page after that. So I feel we're.
Mr. Rush.
If you look at it from the perspective of traveling to the county to use the free online service, there's a cost for that. Then you have to look at, we have a lot of senior citizens in our community, one, that do not have that transportation and do not have that same opportunity. So I think $5 is very reasonable for somebody to be able to access the information and get what they need. So I, I'm really glad to see that we have that availability to the clients. They can choose to use it or not.
Yeah, lots, lots of senior seniors leave and call us. They don't have a computer. They know what they want.
Exactly.
We'll hand it to them and we'll take their credit card information over the phone.
I know, I just, I just recently did some business with the, your department. I had to drive up here twice. And then I think there was a third time I had to come back because I had forgotten something. So it's three trips up here to take care of business when I could have spent five bucks and done it all from my office. So I don't think it's unreasonable that the consumer can choose to use it or not.
We spent a really lot of time just kind of researching it, searching our hearts, you know, what is, you know, the best way, you know, without being too crazy, but making it fair, and hopefully maybe just a little bit more profitable for the county to cover, you know, our expenses.
I'm just concerned that we're raising rates without really any additional cost for, for the county itself, it sounds like. I mean, we've been consistently around $57,000, and, and, I mean, we're really here to provide those services. I do believe in fees for service, but it's, I hate to raise it just to raise it, you know?
Right, but like the $200, you know, the monthly fee for like a title searcher, right now they're paying $300 and they're getting unlimited copies, and I've been heard that they get 800, you know, will print 800 pages. Well, if they print 800 pages, that's $800, and really they're getting it all for three, so. so...
Well, but they print them at their office and they print them on their own paper, so they're not, you know, they're not getting it at no cost because they're paying the $200 or $300 per month, you know?
Nice thinking.
And we're not printing them out for them or anything, so...
No, but they can come to the office and really pay a dollar per page to print what they want, so...
Any other questions?
I was going to ask, though, we had a cost to putting all of this, all the microfiche or the scanning, we've spent a lot of money getting it to this point, too. So it sort of offsets what we spent digitizing it all.
True.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes six to one.
I'm sorry, the voter now?
Thank you. I will get that email to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
All right, and that brings us to IT and ESRI.
Morning again.
Morning.
What I have here is two requests. They're basically for continued maintenance of, one, our ESRI software, which is our GIS mapping software that's used by planning and equalization. It's an annual fee, it was budgeted. It's just something that's over the limit, and we have to bring it towards you guys.
Commissioner Ansari.
I move to recommend approve the renewal of a maintenance agreement between Leonel County and ESRI in the amount of $5,475.81. The funds to come from the data processing fund number 636.
Sorry. Do we have to waive the bid requirements?
You couldn't bid it from anybody else. It's, yeah, it's not a bid, it's not a biddable item.
All right. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, next is the renewal of a maintenance contract that we have for our backup server. The server's been in place for three years and the three-year maintenance agreement that was originally purchased with it is expiring, and we'd like to get it back in service for additional two years. At that point, it'll probably need to be replaced, but within the next two years, it's a critical server and it really needs to be covered under maintenance with Dell. So that's 446623, and it was budgeted, and it needs to come to court.
Commissioner Rush.
I have a question.
Sure.
The extended maintenance agreement, is that different from the original maintenance?
No, just extended two more years.
Okay, so it's exactly the same?
Correct.
All right.
Yep, onsite, next day service for it.
I would move to recommend that the board purchase an extended maintenance agreement with Dell for the data backup server and storage device for an additional two years at the cost of $4,466.23 with funds to come from the data processing fund 636.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Yeah. That brings us to Brownfield Redevelopment Authority vacancy.
I can give a brief update. This was on the agenda last month, and I believe there was a request to table it for a month to do some research, and it went back to Brownfield Board, and they are sticking with the original recommendation of John Aron's. He followed the process, met all timelines, applied on a timely basis, and so it was re-recommended that they stick with Mr. Aron. So probably will be another vacancy or two in the near future that the other candidate can be eligible for.
Commissioner Soder.
I move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to appoint...
John Aron.
John Aron, thank you, to fill a vacancy on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board, term to expire December 31, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I did have a question in regards to that.
Sure.
And my question was, Trudy had sent an email on the first...
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm sorry, that's wrong. On June 4th, there was another name added to that. Did they still stay with the recommendation even though they got, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm sorry about that. Okay, so then that would bring us then on to Parks and Rec Commission, the Grub Shack. Does anybody want to speak to this? Commissioner Wessel.
I move to recommend approval of the agreement between Jay Shephell Construction and Leonel County for remodeling and expansion of the Old Settlers Park Grub Shack pending council review and approval.
For discussions.
Commissioner Ansari.
Not in the budget, why are we approving this?
Commissioner Wessel.
It is in the budget, it's in Parks and Recreation.
Doesn't say that here.
We went out for bids on this and the contractors were reluctant to bid on this. We had one bid over $100,000, I believe. This came to the last Parks and Recreation meeting and was supported unanimously by the Parks and Recreation Commission members that were there.
I'm just saying, form is not indicated in this budget.
I think it's part of the general budget, not a specific. I don't think when you did your budget last year, you put this in it, but you have money in the general fund for the Parks and Recs, guessing.
Did you have another question?
If it's not, if they didn't have it in the budget, why are you spending money on it? Where's the money coming from?
Right, it doesn't indicate it on this. Commissioner Law.
Thank you. What Parks and Recreation has, excuse me, what we have committed is $10,000 towards this project. So there is a group of neighbors that surround Old Settlers Park who have said that they would pick up the rest of this project. So it is my understanding, and I think, as I said, so your understanding, that the most Parks and Rec is going to pay and has budgeted is the $10,000. So if the neighbors do not come up with the rest, this project will not happen, because we just absolutely don't have it, certainly not in our 2019 budget. My concern with this is that we still can't get it done until 2020. So I think that this has to be pretty much pending all of these steps happening. The neighbors still have to come forward and all this has to be, we have to have that commitment, maybe the funds upfront. We definitely would have to have it in our, in Parks 2020 budget for it, and then it would go on, go on forward. We were disappointed, obviously, that we didn't get enough bids, and I appreciate that someone has come forward and said, "Well, I can do it," and I'm not opposed to taking that contractor, since we got no other bids, if it would be done in 2019, because we had hoped that this would be done before the 4th of July this year. So, but yet, so I'm not quite sure whether we should take, use this process if we're going to wait until next year anyway. So should we just rebid it? And maybe contractors will have a lighter load next year, and perhaps we could get more bids on the project. Maybe we won't, maybe it will cost more, I'm not sure. But I understand, I understand where Parks and Rec is coming from in that this is a project we would really like to do, and if the neighbors are committed, let's do it. So that's kind of a nutshell of what I understand the process is.
Commissioner Rush.
My concern is with the issue of how the motion is stated. None of that information is stated in the motion. If in fact, we are only going to allocate $10,000 for this, the motion should specify that, it should talk about, it should be broadened, because the way it's written now, if this is approved, the county would then be responsible, you know, through our general fund, I would assume, for the balance of this contract. So maybe the motion maker would like to adjust.
Commissioner, I would like to withdraw my motion and make it another motion.
Is that okay with the seconds?
Yes, it is.
I would like to move this forward to next week's meeting and talk to our commission chair and make sure we have all the details we need to make a decision.
I appreciate that.
I'll support that.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion to move it forward to next week is pass, seven to zero. Thank you. All right, that brings us then to the administration, the MERS Conference delegates.
Yeah, this is an annual event where the county board designates one person from its administration to be the official delegate, and the staff picks one person from their employee group to be their official delegate. And traditionally, it's been the county administrator, and this year, Mark and I continue to serve in Rome and have Michelle Crocker be the alternate and also attend the conference. It's in the Grand Travis Resort this year, so there's no travel or hotel cost.
Commissioner Rush.
I move to recommend the appointment of Administrator Chat Janik as the officer delegate to attend the 73rd Annual MERS Conference and to appoint Michelle Crocker as the alternate officer delegate at the cost of $175 per person. Funds to come from the Board of Commissioners' travel line item ending in 860 and Board of Commissioners' education line item ending in 960.
Support.
Commissioner Ansari.
Didn't we budget some money for this?
Yeah, we're in very good shape. They should have put it in the amount. The money's there.
The budgeted amount is nothing.
We should have put it in there. It's part of our budget every year.
I assume, you know, so...
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. So that would bring us then to, I guess, the budget.
Yeah, I just have passed out the budget sheet, just to want to have a dialogue on our meeting dates. I know the clerk has requested that we not meet on July 23rd. She has been extremely short-staffed, she's down two people in her office, and it just makes it difficult. We're hoping to fill those positions. One of the people will be back to work hopefully next week from medical leave, but it does slow down the process. But we're very confident we can meet the October deadline date. But since we're all here, Michelle, I believe you were hoping we could have the first meeting on the 30th, is that correct?
Well, it sounds like the 31st.
All right, so I guess we just need to have dialogue, when we can have the first meeting, the last part of July, first week of August.
The 31st.
Okay, yeah, that's several people said so.
The 31st work for anyone?
Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
I'm good.
Yeah.
31st?
No, I have beta that day.
Morning or afternoon?
I believe it's in the morning.
All day, okay.
We just got our schedule changed together.
August 1st?
I'm good.
Should we do the afternoon rather than morning, like maybe?
Up to you. August 1?
I'd rather do it in the morning. I know, I would too, but mornings are hard if I've got a commitment.
I'm good until 5:00.
So they suggest I do it in the afternoon. Usually the first minute is not long, that long because we pass out the books and go over everything. So I think a half-day would be fine.
Can you start at 12:30?
Probably.
So August 1, at 12:30. Michelle, that'll work for you?
I'll make it work.
And could we pick a second date, since we're out here?
We were holding the 12th.
Well, we were holding the 8th or the 12th. Would those days still work?
The 12th is out for me. The 8th could work. I'd like the 8th in the morning.
Okay, so we'll go with the first two meetings.
Hang on, let me look.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I know it's hard to plan.
What time on the 8th?
It was suggested at 9:00 AM.
That's fine.
All right, so our first two meetings, August 1 at 12:30 PM, August 8 at 9:00 AM, and then we'll go from there and see what people's schedules are. All right? Michelle, that'll work for you? All right, thank you. We'll go with those dates.
So I don't think we need a motion for that.
No, no, this is just...
We'll just follow it with that.
Yeah.
We'll have to sign those for the question.
No, because those are committee meetings, so we don't have to, rather than four meetings. We can post committee meetings.
Oh, very good.
It's a committee of the whole meeting.
Yep. All right, so then we'll move on to 2019 goal updates. Number one is early childhood committee.
Yes. Commissioner Ansari and I just have a brief update, which, I'll redistribute this if I may, which, for everyone else's purposes, I'll read. The Early Childhood County Committee held their third and final meeting on June 25th. Beginning with their first meeting in April, the committee worked diligently, initially to define the issues and challenges surrounding provision of early childhood programs and services in Leonel County, identifying which programs worked, who was being served, what was missing, and how to better coordinate limited resources. To accomplish the next steps, the committee divided into three focus groups, health, strong families, and positive learning experiences, holding group meetings between the full committee meetings to refine the initial brainstorming outcomes, research data regarding their findings, and finally to craft action recommendations that provide solutions to the issues and challenges that were identified. These action recommendations are targeted to a number of agencies, with many relating to our Leonel Benzi Health Department. Both the Health Department staff and board member participated on the Early Childhood County Committee. Our next step is to continue to work with the Health Department Board to gain their input on the recommendations. We have requested also a special meeting of this body, our Board of Commissioners, later this month to present, or the first part of August, to present a final report and discuss the findings and recommendations. Commissioner Ansari and I thank this board for the opportunity to work on this important issue, and we look forward to sharing the detailed information with you at the special meeting.
Any questions? Commissioner Law.
Well, I guess I have more of a concern that you have a special meeting and we receive all the information, all the detailed information at a special meeting, when a special meeting is an action meeting. So I object to that, and I think that at the very least, we should have all the detailed information before it could be acted on.
You mean a report?
Either a report, or if you want to present it at, to the full board in person, it should be done in a work session format rather than a special meeting. I'm objecting to a special meeting.
Well, there's no problem getting you information before, which was our intent, to provide you with the report before so that you will be very familiar with what the recommendations were and can then go ahead and act.
Because it is your intention to act at the special meeting.
Yes, it is.
So why wouldn't it be at our executive committee like we usually do?
It was suggested by our county administrator that, given the import of this particular issue, that it would need a special meeting because they thought, you know, the thought was it would take a lot longer to address questions, to have public input. You know, we have 30, 42 people on the committee that actually participated in this, representing all kinds of different organizations and parents and schools, and it was pretty comprehensive. So the thought was that, you know, to allocate 20 minutes on our executive board meeting or half an hour may not be sufficient time, and we can do it that way, but I don't think it would work.
I like the executive meeting on 13th of August or in September. I'd like the executive meeting on 13th of August or in September. I like that idea very well.
Well, I think our recommendation is to stay with a special meeting so that we can move this process forward. You know, people really committed their time and energy, and it's important to continue the momentum while we have it going.
Do we have a motion? Or three commissioners ask for the special meeting?
Not yet.
Not yet, don't know. By your board rules, three commissioners can call a special board meeting. Or you can take a motion.
Commissioner Anser.
I move to have a special meeting for the early childhood development this month. You want to pick a date right now? We will.
Support.
So the dates that were suggested are Monday, July 29th, Tuesday, August 6th, Wednesday, August 7th, or Thursday, August 8th. You have a budget meeting on August 8th right now, if you're there.
I don't do that either.
Those were the suggested dates from Commissioner Anser, again, so.
Could you run it through those again?
Yes, Monday, July 29th at 2:00 PM, Tuesday, August 6th at 9:00 or 1:00, or Wednesday, August 7th at 2:00.
I could do the afternoon, like 3:00 on the 29th. I could do 3:00 on the 5th. That was the second day you were looking at, the 5th?
Uh, August 6th.
5th, okay.
Tuesday, August 6th.
Yeah, I could do 3:00 that day.
So does that sound good with everyone? Tuesday, August 6th at, what, at 3:00, you said?
Well, that was the suggestion there.
Yeah.
August 6th, 3:00 PM.
I could probably adjust.
Earlier?
No, not earlier.
We'll still have to have three signatures for that.
If we pass a motion today, we're...
Well, that's part of the rules.
But Mr. Cole said if you pass a motion in the meeting, you can, but this is not a regular meeting though, this is an executive, so you would need a three signatures. If you pass it next Tuesday night, you can do it, but you can get, if you agree on a date today, the clerk can send out the, she can do it right now, probably.
For a special meeting?
Well, it's, yes. You're, I believe you're saying a special meeting.
I guess I would request that we have the information a week ahead of time, just as we would for our executive committee. At least have the report or whatever, at least that time, give us some time to look at it.
We can do that.
So that'd be July 29th?
Or sooner.
We're doing July 29th or August 6th?
No, the information.
For the information.
No later than 29th.
Well, part of it is the Health Department. We need to work with them, and their board meets, I believe it's on the 25th. So, you know, we need to get their input before I can come back to you with the final report. So I think that doing it on the 20, getting it to you on the 29th or 30th is certainly doable.
Will that be the report from the Health Department?
That will be a report from the committee incorporating Health Department.
What they said.
Whenever they recommend.
So August 6th at 3:00 PM? And Michelle, you can do the request.
Yes.
So we have a motion and think every, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So I believe the motion passes five to two.
So just for clarification, the three commissioners signed this, though we don't need to put this on general next Tuesday night.
Right.
If three don't sign it, then it'll be on the general.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we have that, then, I believe then we're then at septic ordinance?
Let's start.
Okay.
Commissioner Rushmore.
Did you want to?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we attended, Ty and I attended a clean water meeting, or presentation, at the Leona School several weeks ago, and there was a film that was presented at that time, and also our Director of Environmental Services, Eric Johnson, is here, and he has a PowerPoint. So we just thought it was important because we are considering, or we would like to have septic inspection ordinance passed by the Health Department and recommended to this board for approval, that we share as much information as possible. So Eric, you want to come forward and be available for questions, certainly, and...
Eric, I did not get your PowerPoint.
No, it's too big, so I have it on here, and Ron said he'd set it up, so.
Well, I can set it up. But don't you have a video you want to show too?
You have the link to that.
Yeah, I can't, if I turn it off, and I...
If you want to do that first, then I can do this.
Let me piggyback on what Peachy had to say. We spent much of the day at Leona School, and it was a very powerful program, a full house, and at that meeting, we were reminded that this remains on our goals for this year to consider options. So we thought a good place to start that consideration was asking Eric to be here and watching the video that Nature Change and Leona Clean Water and the Benzi Conservation District and Flow put together. So we'll start with the video. Mr. Janet?
People often don't know that they have septic systems or if they do, they don't pay...
I'm trying to blow it up here, so.
Like Chernobyl? Blow it up like...
Ah. All right. Yeah, yeah.
People often don't know that they have septic systems or if they do, they don't pay attention to it. The only time they pay attention to it is if you're using facilities and then backs up. Septic systems do a great job for the most part, removing the major organisms, but despite that, some still are released in the environment, and to the extent that they travel and they move to a private well or to a river, and then someone drinks from that or goes swimming and swallows a little bit of water, a person can become ill.
In general, there's a suggestion that anywhere from 10% to 18% of septic tanks can go onto a look, are failing. The state of Michigan, as a public trustee, must protect both the surface and the groundwater.
Most of us living outside of cities in northern Michigan rely on private wells for water to drink, cook, and flush. And when we flush or pour stuff down the drain, we rely on private septic tanks and dispersal fields to clean up our wastewater. Yes, our wastewater returns to flow when the groundwater feeds rivers and lakes and maybe your neighbor's well. These days, most septic systems use double-chambered tanks to sort and digest waste before sending partly clean water to a constructed dispersal area underground. We rely on good bacteria and air in this layer of gravel and natural soils to remove most of the bad stuff. Then, once left, rejoins the groundwater flowing within our... Public health codes adopted by counties and local health departments regulate the design and installation of septic systems. Water policy specialist Dr. Granada Tomasi says, "That's a good start."
Once those new septic systems are installed, there is no requirement, no legal requirement to ever look at them again, ever. So they go in the ground, and that's it. No one ever pays any attention to them again. And through our research, we discovered that most of these systems are expected to have a lifespan of about 25 to 30 years. And so if they're never being looked at again, how do we know if that lifespan is actually living out? There's just no accounting for what happens to these things once they're installed.
Environmental health official Eric Johnston says, "Regular cure of septic systems is necessary to keep them working properly. These systems can be damaged in lots of ways, including invasion of treatment."
They can get into a system and they can plug up that gravel, they can plug up the pipes leaking from the septic tank to the drain field, it can also get into the septic tank and go back to the house and plug that up. So that's one way. If a septic tank is not properly serviced, we recommend every three to five years by a licensed septic hauler that comes in, opens them up, and pumps them out, those materials, the scum layer and sludge layer, they can build up to such a degree that they start to get siphoned out to the drain field. Those finer particles then fill up those, the interface between the gravel and the soil. The other way is if you hydraulically overload a system, you just give it too much water. You know, we designed it, like I said, for bedroom sizes, but if you're just overloading it, and overloading, and overloading it, it becomes a oxygen poor environment, it turns into an anaerobic situation, and that whole process starts to break down.
Unlike other parts of your home, a nearly septic system can cause harm to others beyond your property boundaries by polluting nearby waters and sometimes discharges from a septic system and actually make people sick. Dr. Joan Rose is a microbiologist and internationally recognized expert in wastewater. About five years ago, Rose led a team of researchers from Michigan State University using new DNA detection techniques to check for markers of human fecal waste in 60 water systems across rural Michigan.
Lo and behold, clear trends emerged. One was this relationship between this human marker and the no-rep septic tanks. The more the human marker in watershed, the more septic tanks. There was a relationship. It suggested to me that we have been underestimating the potential for onsite systems which are discharging to the soil, discharging perhaps to groundwater, to impact our surface waters. And we have underestimated that. One of my colleagues has done some exceptional work in Wisconsin on viruses, Dr. Mark Porchar. He's been studying septic tanks and groundwater systems and viruses for quite some time, and he's found the relationship between septic tanks and kids getting sick.
I'm the director of the Laboratory for Infectious Disease and Environment. What we're interested in is fecal contamination of drinking water, groundwater, surface water, fecal sources, and how that might relate to human health outcomes. What we have seen in studies we've done is that the greater the number of septic systems, whether they're failing or not, the more likely is that people become ill. Well, septic systems do, for the most part, an excellent job of removing what needs to be removed, the nutrients in human fecal waste and the microorganisms. The removal rate can differ by how old the septic system is, how it was designed, but probably the most important element is that the concentration of microbes. So for example, when you have a norovirus infection, for every gram of fecal material, you have about a trillion of those viruses in every gram. And let's say, let's say you have a trillion, and the septic system is designed to remove 99% of that, well, then you're left with roughly 10 billion per gram. So if you start with a high number with an infected person, even a 99% removal, you're still going to be left at the affluent end once released into underground. That's still going to be a high number.
Norovirus is one of a large number of pathogens associated with human fecal bacteria.
Norovirus is very nasty. It goes through the household, virtually 100% hit rate. If one of you in the house has got norovirus, just cancer clients for a couple of weeks because it's going to go around. Something like 10 micro particles is all it takes to get infected, and these happen associated with, you know, with contaminated water. So most of us have heard about norovirus. As far as bacteria, there are many of them. The more common ones everyone's heard are things like salmonella. Shigala is another one that takes very few organisms, and these are things that could be found in fecal waste. Some of these organisms will cause a water diarrhea because they can infect the small intestine, but others like salmonella, shigala can cause more of a dysentery, where it's a large bowel infection, where you can get more frequent, lower-volume sort of diarrhea and even bloody, and these things can be ugly.
There are estimated 1.4 million septic systems across suburban and rural Michigan. If these septic systems present such serious concerns for water quality and public safety, you might think that state and local regulations would require owners to make sure they're working properly, like the brake lights on our cars. Well, not necessarily.
At the time I started this research, there were about 11 locations in the state of Michigan that also had on the books what they called time of transfer or point of sale inspection ordinances. So out of 80-plus counties, there were 11 or so that were actually the only places in Michigan that were looking at septic systems after they were initially installed. But the only time they ever looked at them was when a property transfer happened. That's great, and that's an important first step, and we really support those ordinances because as we research them more closely, we find that they find things regularly when they do these inspections.
Even in one of the state's most popular tourist areas, celebrated for clean, clear lakes, there's only a patchwork of protection. While Benzie County requires septic system inspections, when a property changes hands, neighboring Leona County doesn't, and these two counties share a single effort.
We tried about six years ago, here, county-wide ordinance, and we had the Department of Health Director there in front of the commissioners, and we were all there sort of standing in support of this movement, and it didn't happen. So that's when Leona Clean Water became a forum, a committee of the commission, it's actually now a separate board, Leona Clean Water Board, and we are reacting to that. The commissioner is not wanting to step up to the septic ordinance like we had in our neighboring county of Benzie. We tried it a second round and made a big deal out of it, and still no vote. There was a close vote, but no vote for the septic ordinance at the county level. So that's when I said, okay, if the county doesn't want to do this, then let's go township by township.
Tricia Dedson has organized education programs and pushed for septic system inspections in Leona County. Still, she gives county commissioners the benefit of the doubt.
The votes have been pretty split, and for lots of different reasons. There was still question, I think, in the minds of some of the commissioners whether or not this was actually a public health issue, and whether or not it was an issue that was significant enough that a county-wide ordinance would be the best way to address it. There are questions remaining regarding whether this is something that could just impact people who live around lakes or along the surface water. We think not, we being the league, and most of the folks that have supported a uniform septic code have scientific evidence that shows otherwise, but that's still a big part of the public perception around it, is that it's about water quality as far as nutrients in the water, but there's evidence that it's a public health threat also to people's drinking water, to water wells, and groundwater.
And smart about this and in some traction on protecting our water is using a new technology called quantitative polymerase chain reaction, or QPCR, and that allows us to go and take water samples, run it through a system of DNA testing, look for the markers of microbes that live in our human gut tract, and be able to see if those markers are showing up in the water, therefore definitively proving that we have human sewage going into our surface water. So we did a study for the first time... So we did a study for the first time last year comprised of about three lakes and we did find out one thing is that we can detect enteric bacteria, but this human form of bacteria isn't the water from sewage.
Ron Reineck was the leader of a team working for three Lealaw Lake associations looking for human vital markers in the water.
With Glen Lake, Lime Lake and Little Traverse Lake here in Lealaw County, we went around and tested water sort of randomly, but every 500 feet. And we took water samples along with other, you know, depth of water, temperature, conductivity and those sorts of things and extracted the DNA and amplified the DNA with the QPCR. With a specific marker, it's called HF1H3. And that specific marker that we were amplifying is only found in bacteria that are found in the human gut. If that one, particular one is present, then you know that somehow, some way the human enteric bacteria had entered the water. And what we found on each lake, actually Glen, Lime and Little Traverse is there were there were areas with low levels of HF1H3 or the human enteric bacteria.
That markers of human sewage were found in relatively small lakes surrounded by septic system is not surprising to experts like Dr. Porchar.
Well, my guess is if you have a situation like that where you have high groundwater, a high septic system density, my guess is if we were to take a look at your gut microbiome, all the neighbors share the microbiome because you're all drinking each other's fecal material. It's probably what's happening. So, and that's fine. You know, there's nothing wrong with drinking diluted poop. It's just that when it has a pathogen in it, that's when you end up with disease problems.
I think septic tanks are a source of fecal pollution to smaller lakes and to our lakeshore. We have too many of them. Climate has changed the way, you know, things drain on the land and I think that we're probably adding a lot more both nutrients and fecal bacteria and viruses to our water waste through septic tanks than we realize.
So if septic systems present a pollution risk to the surface and groundwater of the state, what is the owner's responsibility?
The issue of septic and groundwater protection is really fundamental for landowners to understand their responsibilities as stewards and to help protect this shared public trust resource. What is so unique about the public trust is this multi-generational responsibility for current and future generations because you want your kids to come up to that little cabin, a cottage on the lake and enjoy and have those incredible memories that you did. And I think there's an urgent need for the state to be thinking about protections statewide that would address the septic pollution throughout the state.
I can't believe someone could have a septic tank and field and not want to know how they work, not want to make sure they're working properly and want to make sure they're not contaminated in their own water table, which more than often will be just directly below their septic field and all their neighbors' septic field. In most situations, between subdivision, we'll all share the same water table. So yeah, I don't know why anyone would not want to know about these things and to make sure that they're inspected on a regular basis and doing their job.
So just to make a couple of comments on the film before you get started, Eric, I just wanted to say that as county commissioners, that we're sworn to uphold the constitution of the state and the public trust to protect water is part of that. And I just think that it's very important that I listened to just a few things that said, these things can be deadly. These are important, important issues we're talking about and we all share the same water table. So it's not just riparians that are affected by this, it's every person in the county. And I don't know how much of our surface of the county is taken up by water, but it's quite a bit. And with just with the coastline alone, not to mention the Aldi and Lynn Lakes. Couple of comments about the film.
Yeah, and I'd like to say that that film to me showed absolutely no, nothing from the other side. Totally was one-sided. It was full of innuendo and scare tactics.
They're called facts.
Exactly. It had no facts. Continually, they said, we think, we... Please, no comments from things. It said, we think these things are happening. It also, they jumped to conclusions when they found human waste in the water that it was from the septic, which was completely unproven and unstated. It also made a suggestion that maybe 18, 10 to 18% are coming from septic. No facts about it. They think that it's coming from it or they suggest that it is. And they stated, that's what they stated themselves. The idea that, that, you know, how many people in Lealaw County have gotten sick from this? I didn't hear of one. And, and then they talked about trees, which is an environmental issue, but it's not a pollution issue. If trees get into your septic system, it does not cause pollution. It causes you to put in a new septic system. They talked about the drain fields filling up with sludge. That doesn't cause pollution. That causes your drain field to go bad. The only thing that I really felt that they talked about were drain wells. What is it? When they, when you use those, yes, that could cause it to get it, but that was hardly mentioned at all. And continually they talked about human waste being in the waters, whether it was in, what was it, Little Traverse Lake, Lime Lake and Glen Lake. In all of those lakes, people swim in it. And if you swim in it, you will get fecal matter into those waters. And they said it's in very minute amounts. So, you know, to me, I'd like to see where the water has gotten cleaner from Benson, where the water has gotten cleaned from any place where they have the septic ordinance. Never do we get facts about what's making it cleaner. I mean, at least, you know, the conservancy has brought up facts that our water is getting cleaner, but then they say, but that's not from the septic system. So I just feel that that, that thing presented a lot of innuendo and scare tactics. And I, you know, and you want to call them facts, but I don't see that as facts. Commissioner West.
One of the reasons I wanted Eric Johnston to be here is he does come with facts. He comes with facts from Benson County and their experience from their inspections. So before we have conversation about the video, I suggest that we consider the data that Eric presents and then have that discussion. All right. Please.
Thank you again for inviting me here to speak about Benson County's time of transfer. I am the environmental health director for Benson and Lealaw District Health Department. The presentation I'm going to give you now is what our program is about, some of the things we have found and one example of a true incident that happened during an evaluation program. So first, I'd like to just explain what our well and septic evaluation program is. In Benson County, it's called Article 9 and I do have copies of that, plus a couple of other township ordinances in here that I'll give you at the end so you can review that. So the purpose right in the Article 9 is to protect public health and to prevent or minimize degradation of groundwater or surface water by improper or malfunctioning sewage disposal systems or water well systems through the regulation of the transfer or sale of the property or premises. When do we do that? So anytime an owner wants to sell, convey, assign or transfer ownership of or exclusive rights in any dwelling and/or habitable building or premise. Or any premise in which there is located a sewage disposal system constructed on or before December 31st, 1971, or a sewage disposal system constructed at any time without a permit or approval by the health department. The significance of December 31st, 1971 is when our modern code that we use now went into effect. That'd be January, actually, '72. The goal of the evaluation is to determine that the sewage disposal system and water well system are in substantial conformance with the standards of the code and its regulations. Does that mean it has to be 100%? No. It has to be in substantial conformance. What does that mean? What are we looking for? We're looking at the size and condition of the septic system, the operational condition of the system, the isolation distance between the high groundwater table, between the high groundwater table and the bottom of whatever the final disposal system is, the isolation distance between waters and wetlands, the isolation distance between water wells and sewage systems, the suitability of the soil conditions on site, and does the water that we sample meet the national primary drinking water regulations for chloroform bacteria and nitrates and other parameters that are requested? So here's the example. This is a true story. This happened a couple of years ago. So let's you imagine that you are buying this home for $560,000. It's on this beautiful lake just to the left of the picture on the right is a boat launch. There's a swimming beach, very nice place. If you could see to the right of that house, there's a creek. That's called the Lower Herring Creek. So if you were to buy this without a well and septic evaluation, let's say you went to get a drink of water. The water you drank had a little, some spots in it, had a little funny taste to it. You weren't sure why. So you decided to take a look at the aerator, which most of our sinks have. So when you take that off, you notice those little spots that are in there. It could be hardness that most of us have in northern Michigan. It could have iron like most of us have in northern Michigan. It could have little specks that may have come off of a steel casing of your well. Who knows? But if you look closer, you may also have little pincers and legs and ant parts. We see these quite often. So in this house, the well is where you see it up there to the right of the house, between the house and the creek. Upon inspection of that well, that's what it looked like. It's got a cap that was on there prior to 1994. That's the way they were. They just kind of set it on top, little set screws keep them on. And if you can't see it real well on there, but you see a little white little lines underneath it, those are cobwebs. Right there. And if you take that cap off, you see caterpillar cocoons in there. You see the spider webs. You see all manner of earwigs flying out of that as soon as you take the cap off and many other insects. So what usually happens in that situation is people are rather disturbed that they've been drinking those pieces and parts throughout the years. Bacteria samples usually will come back as positive for E. coli, or sorry, for total chloroform. That means you have to call a well driller out there or a plumber that's experienced to chlorinate the well, replace the electrical conduit and the cap. This is quite frequent, actually. So when he's all said and done, that's what the well looks like. That would relieve you of those little insect parts and pieces and anything that's going to fall to the bottom of the well that will harbor bacteria. So you move past that, a few months later, you notice clodofra or algae growing and proliferation along the creek bed there. You may have an organization sampling the creek, which they did, where samples above the creek or above this home were within limits for bathing and below it, it was elevated for E. coli. You may have an illness in the house. Stomach infection. Could be norovirus. It could be many different things. You may have sewage on the ground. You may have a sinkhole. You may have that. Or you may have that. And we have had lawnmowers go into tanks before. So upon investigation, when you hire a private contractor to come out and figure out what's going on, as you find you have a septic tank underneath your deck. And it's a steel 300 gallon drum, an old fuel oil drum turned on its side that somebody used back in 1960 when this house was built, which is not uncommon in houses of that age. And then you move further along and you find a dry well, which is nothing but a 50 gallon drum with holes punched in the sides stuck in the ground, stuck in the ground and in the water table. And if you look again, there's the creek and that's 12 feet from the creek. The water below the actual ground level there is about two feet below the ground level. So you know that dry well is sitting in the water table. And there's your well again that you found earlier and it's 35 feet from that steel septic tank that are rusting out and it has holes in it and do collapse. So all of these things that you see, and this again, I repeat, this is a true evaluation that we did. All of them were corrected because we did the evaluation prior to the transfer of the premises to the buyer. None of that would have been caught if we hadn't done it. Because I guarantee the owner would not have disclosed it, he would not have said anything because he knew it was there. He's known it's been there. So the things that we do find because of our existing system inspection program, we find systems are significantly undersized, they're improper septic tank constructions such as that fuel oil tank. I've seen refrigerators, I've seen some other interesting, you know, you always hear rumors about old cars and things like that. Haven't seen outside. Final disposal system failures. So there's sewage on the ground surface. You don't see that terribly often because most people notice it, but then there are occasions where they're under bushes and people just don't know it because it just keeps on going. Final disposal systems where they're less than four foot to the groundwater table. Those are the ones around the lakes that we normally find. And I've seen in that instance, right around the other side of the lake where that creek is coming from, on the far side, the Upper Herring Lake, they had the exact same situation with a dry well that was 10 feet from the edge of the lake. Direct discharge to ground surface or water body, improper isolation distances to lakes and owners' wells, systems cross lot lines and structures over top of septic systems or wells. So here are some common well issues that we find. A lot of times conduit slips out, cracked well case, or well caps, too close to the We have the old black kind of waterline conduits that don't sit tightly in there. There's that darn well cap. You can see there's grass clippings up underneath it. Sometimes we find where snowplows have hit the wells and broke them. Septic systems, if you look on the left-hand side, you can see a little pipe coming out with arrows pointing at. That is a direct discharge from that house that's up there and that is going directly into the Betsy River just north of a campground where there are 120 sites where people are swimming and canoeing and kayaking. And people are fishing all the way along that stretch. It's fairly popular fishing area. In the middle there, you have a swimming pool. The swimming pool is directly on the drain field. The one on the right there, that is a house that sold in the Lake Anne area. The yellow arrow is pointing to the drain field or the final disposal system, which is directly under that really nice deck. And there's absolutely no way you'd get, be able to inspect that or look at it or know if it's failing unless you have a dinner party and people smell it. Roots getting into a system, it's not uncommon for us to determine or find systems like this where you have roots in it. They're starting to get into the outlet pipe and we can clean those out before they cause an issue for the buyer or notify them that there is a rooting issue and that it should be looked into or taken care of before they buy it or transfer the property. Roots into a drain field, I've seen nothing you can do about that, but hopefully you can find that out before it becomes too big of a problem. Sewage on the ground surface, you have a system there on the right that is completely plugged off. The fine materials have gotten out of the tank and they plugged off the soil interface with a stone and it's a matter of time, months, weeks before that fails. And there's no, no way to know if that owner has been milking that system to make sure it's not on top of the ground surface, surface as he's trying to sell the home. Septic tank on the left is completely full of effluent, which means that it's not getting out to drain field. Septic tank in the middle. Septic tank in the middle, as we talked about, dry well on the right. So why do we believe that a septic and well inspection program is important? We have been doing this for 27 years in Benzey County. It has been our, without a doubt, our most important tool for finding the septic systems that are out of date, that are in the water table, that are about to fail or are failing without question. We live in a vacation area. It's the reason why we're here, and this is why Benzey County, from my understanding, implemented this program, is because people come here for our water. They come here for our beautiful area that we live in. So this program allows us to try to get those systems that are affecting those resources up to date. Without it, they're just sitting there, and they will not be updated. The one thing that is rarely discussed is that this program protects buyers and realtors, for that matter, from unscrupulous sellers. Because in the case of this that I just showed you, that would not have been disclosed. He would not have done. We do the inspection. We take a look at it. We find the problems. We say this is the issue, and then at that point, it's a negotiation process between the buyer and seller. The seller can pay for it all, the buyer can pay for it all, they can split it 50/50, and we do not care. It's not up to us. But at least they know it's there. Some of the times, and most of the time, especially early in the program, the owners knew that this program was there. They knew that we were going to evaluate it, and they took it upon themselves to get their septic systems up to date already, before we even got there. So the reason I like the way we do it down in Benzey County is we do it at time of transfer, and usually it's at the point of sale, is because at that point, you, as a seller, are already inviting inspectors into your home. You're doing a title search, you're having surveyors come in, you're having house inspectors come in. They already know inspectors are going to come in. So they know you're there to check the well and septic system, just like anybody would check a furnace for a cracked plumbing or something of that nature. So we go, they say, okay, go right ahead, versus the other method where you have to knock on doors and show up and say, I'm from the government, I'm here to check your septic system. A little more confrontational at that point. It also, with our current staffing, allows us to handle the volume in a timely manner so we're not moving anything up, which is why we like it that way. And lastly, financial transactions are occurring. There's a sale of this house. So if there has to be something upgraded at that point in time, it can be negotiated in there, money's transferring hands, there's incentive from both to get this thing done. Money's there instead of, on a march, you're in your pajamas, we show up, there's a septic system issue, you're going to have to pay anywhere between $6,000 and $30,000 to get this fixed. So that's why we like it at that point. So in Benzey County, we do about 330 evaluations per year. So I have some numbers. They mentioned 10% failure rate on that video. In the early years of our program, 1998 to 2003, we had, on average, 9% non-compliant septic systems that had to be upgraded. In 2014 to 2017, so more modern, 4.4%. So those systems, we've decreased it to 4.4% of the places we go to would have to upgrade, whether it's a well construction issue or it's a septic system issue. And to let you know how Leonel County stands, and of course, this is because of Glen Lake adopting a ordinance down there, they started in 2015, so from 2015 to 2017, on average, 18.8% of the systems inspected were not up to date. And that may be a well or septic system. So the program is finding these issues, they're getting these issues taken care of in a manner that seems to have worked very well for Benzey County. So, and on that note, that's my presentation. So thank you very much for listening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I wish you an answer.
If I may, if I may, I've handed out the ordinances, if you don't mind, so you guys have them?
The Benzey ordinance?
Benzey, Glen Lake, and Cleveland Township, just so you can review them.
It's Glen Arbor Township.
Pardon me?
Yeah, it's Glen Arbor Township.
Oh, sorry, Glen Arbor, yes, sorry. Just so you have them.
Commissioner, answer.
Benzey has been doing this for 27 years.
That's correct.
What percentage of the systems have you actually inspected? You know, there's, there's obviously some that have not been looked at yet, and there's some that you've looked at more than once.
That's correct.
So how many in Benzey County, you know, percentage-wise, just rough?
Hmm, I would say at this point in time, I did, I did a little survey of around Upper Herring Lake down in Benzey County, we had 80 to 85% at that time.
So you've...
And that's that area now. There's other areas that don't have many people, so if you do two or three, then you don't hit a lot more. But I would say 80 to 85% have been checked at this point in time.
The health department is the one that provides the permit for septic wells. How many of our properties in Leonel County are beyond the 25-year, 20 to 25-year life of the permit?
Well, that's a very good question. It's hard to give you a good answer at this point in time, but I can tell you from some numbers that I have asked. So there are 16,000 systems or properties in Leonel County that have well and septic per Rob Harmon. So of those, we have issued 4,900 permits. So roughly, we have permits on 30.6% of the systems in Leonel County.
So what you're telling this board, you have 60% of systems in the county that you have no records on?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. So, and that's not out of sorts, because I've, I've talked to some environmental health director up in northwest Michigan, where they did a study in one township that adopted a point-of-sale ordinance, and they had the same ratio of 40% bad records on, 60% they did not.
For me, this approach is kind of backwards. Point-of-sale, to me, does not solve any problems in the near future. When we talk about inspections, the time that it would take to do these point-of-sale inspections, you're looking at 50 years.
On, on some of the ratios, yes.
Yeah. And the other issue is, a lot of our properties in our community are owned and passed down for generations. And a point-of-sale won't work.
That's, our program is a time of transfer or sale. So for instance, if you have a piece of property and you pass it down to your children, at that point in time, it is a transfer. We would have to do an evaluation at that point.
And does the health department have the capability of tracking all of our properties in our counties?
We do at this current time, yes. We're, we're in the process of trying to make those records available to the public through digitization and all of that, but we do have the database with those systems on there that we have records for.
Any other questions, ma'am? Commissioner Longer?
Yes, I, I think that, excuse me, I think that brings up a good point. And I, I think what I would like to see happen, and perhaps would even be a first step per se, is the digitization of the health department's records. They're all paper today, I've just learned. And if those can be cross-referenced with our equalization department, with all our homes in the county, then we would have, we would know which homes don't have modern systems. And those homes, especially if they're on the lakes, you could approach them on getting that system inspected, which you've got the right to do. So especially if you can see those plumages, or if there is any complaint from neighbors or anything like that, we would know that it's at least a pre-72.
Pre-72 is the system, prior to our modern code, is that correct?
But it would take some, some funding through the health department to first get those records figured out.
That's correct. But if I may, you know, I, I believe at this point, it is a two-pronged approach. So if we can get those records digitized, and we have contacted organizations about that, we're in the process of getting that, all the numbers finalized on that, and we'll bring that to the board here shortly, that is something that would be available to the public, so that it would also save us time, but also be an outreach program for the public that we serve. That right there would be a benefit. That would give some organizations, or any individual, or real estate agents, or pumpers, the ability to get those records without tying up hours and hours and hours of our secretarial staff time. So I think that's a fantastic direction, and I think we need to do that. But I also believe, we already have the complaint inspections. We already have those where we can go to a home, because a neighbor sees something or there's a pooh, we can do that already. But the problem with those is we do not get any funding whatsoever for those. So our time is completely drawn out of appropriations or the general fund at that point. So I know there's a lot of systems, and I understand that, with the 16,000 systems, I understand that. But the sooner we can get started on this program, the quicker we can get to that point. There is no way, current staffing and no way with funding, that we could do all of them in a timeframe that everybody would love to handle. However, if we can get started, we can get down that, we can get down that process.
Commissioner, answer.
I just want to clear up one item, you know, you showed the picture of the 55-gallon drums, that that's a dry well. Well, that's not a real dry well.
That's correct.
You know, I have properties that's got a dry well that's 50 feet long, you know?
That's correct.
You know, and it was designed at the time, that was a good design, and, you know, it's actually overbuilt, you know, because at that point in time, my dad said, I want it more, that's, that's not enough. And he made it extra big. But just, I don't, I don't want somebody walking out here thinking, a dry well means a 55-gallon drum.
No, no, that was just that instance.
Or that it's bad.
Or that it's bad.
Because it's working.
That is also correct. So I just wanted to show you what that instance was. That's what it was there. So you are correct, we do have dry wells in the higher parts of Benzey County that aren't anywhere close to the groundwater, anywhere close to creeks or lakes. At no point have we made them updated. If it is working, it is, that's where the significantly in compliance comes from. If it is significantly in compliance and relatively close with size, and it's functioning, there's absolutely no need to change it. But we note that in the report, that this is what it is, we've checked it, it appears to be functioning at this point in time. If and when in the future it does fail, then it should be upgraded to the specs. And then it's completely up to them at that point.
Commissioner, Wessel.
I want to check the numbers you, you shared with us. I think you said there were 11,000-plus systems in the county without permits?
Uh, well, there's, yes, we have on file for Leonel County, 4,900 permits.
So based on your experience in Benzey County, of those 11,000 that we don't even have permits on, what would be your best guess that we see problems with?
Well, just based on what we've seen in Benzey, and we have fairly good soils in Benzey County for septic systems, we were running in the earlier days between 10 and 15% that had issues. So, and of course, it depends on, on the year and where you have, where homes are selling and that sort of thing, because one year we had it where it was 23%, and they happened to be around a lake that's, a lot of the subdivisions were built in a swamp. They just built the swamp and just happened to be that way that year.
So between 1,000 and 1,500 defective systems anyway?
Yes, yes. And if, if it runs true to what Leonel County is running from what we've seen in Glen Arbor Township, you're looking at 20-ish percent of those are failing.
18, 20.
18, 20.
If it's defective, is it causing harm to the environment?
Well, yes. That's why we would have it updated at that point.
Because we, Chairman Bunnick said that he wanted facts. The last time we talked about this issue, we said, just because it's defective, it doesn't mean that it's doing any harm.
Well, just as we talked about, if it's in a high and dry site and it's just not up to the substantial, doesn't meet the code, doesn't mean it has to be ripped out and replaced. However, if it's sitting in the water table, if it's 15 feet or 35 feet from a water well that people are drinking from, if it's in, right by a lake or in a creek, then it, then it has that potential to harm people.
We also said, just one more follow-up. We also said the last time we talked about this, that a homeowner could tell if their system were faulty if they went out in their backyard and looked at the color of the grass or the moisture on the top of the lawn. Is, is it possible for me as a homeowner, with no expertise, to go in my backyard and find out if my septic system is, is, is right?
The, the only way that you would know is if you walked on your lawn and it got nice and squishy and you had water coming out. Because a perfectly operating system in the drier times of the year will be green on top of the ground, you'll have a nice rectangle.
Is that the only indicator? So if, if I didn't have water on my surface, then my septic system's working?
No, that's not correct. So for instance, this, this place right here and many others, if it is in the water table, that system will not show any signs of failure, probably for the entire life of the house and me and you. Because what happens is the groundwater will flush that right back out to the surface and it just continues to go away. So you did not see roots or anything of that nature. Sorry.
I, I think a blanket ordinance for the county punishes those people who are good stewards of their systems. I myself have mine scheduled next month, okay? I keep track of my septic system. For me, if I were to buy a home anywhere, I would never buy without having a septic or a well inspection. It's prudent on the purchaser or even the seller to have that done. I do not support point-of-sale inspection. In fact, I really think that we should probably have some sort of a work-study group so that we can look at how we can effectively address the problems that we see in specific areas. It's just like you said, we've got a lot of systems, they may not be permitted, however, they're functioning just fine. And so for me, I'd like us to have some special time to sit down and look at a program where we could assist the health department in getting their records digitized, so that we know exactly what the problem is. What we're hearing is all these blanket statements. People go to lakes and poop in lakes. I mean, it's a fact. They go there and they urinate in lakes. How do we know that testing hasn't been done two minutes later? We, we don't know. We're not going to control all of human waste in lakes, no matter what we do. But the thing I'm looking at is why punish those with an inspection fee every couple years when they are already taking care of their systems? Is there some way that we can work with some of these waste haulers so that they're reporting to the health department, that, you know, systems have been pumped, and once your department is digitalized, then that information can be done simply on a computer, email, or whatever, and sent to your office, and then you know that these systems are being taken care of?
Well, if I may, a couple of things that you mentioned. You have a lot of systems that you say are working just fine. And I have to... And I have to tell you, based on my 23 years of experience, you'll go to a house, and you don't have records on it, say, "Where is your septic system?" "I don't know. I just flush the toilet, it goes away." They have no idea. Especially folks that have bought up here from the city, they have no clue, they didn't even know they had a septic system. So there are a few, like yourself, and that's why, on our fee schedule, we have a graduated scale based on our records, and what's there. If we have records, and the homeowner's willing to dig up their system, we give them a credit for that, so that we aren't spending hours and hours there. But then you have those individuals that have no idea. They will pay more, because we have to do so much more work on that. Pumpers, they do a great job with what they do, but they only look at the septic. An evaluation system must look at both parts of the system. You have to look at the parts of the system. And you will also have individuals that will not pump their system, and they'll tell you they haven't pumped their system in 30 years, because it's working perfectly fine. So we're always in favor of people pumping their systems, and we're always in favor of septic system companies, or pumping companies, giving us records, so that we can update the files for folks. The more information, the better. But it's like anything, you have to maintain a system, you have to look at a system. Because with a septic system, by the time it fails, it's too late. It's gone. So if you can catch it before then, you're way ahead of the game.
Commissioner, Rusk.
This topic has been discussed for many, many years, and I think many of the people in this room have great interest in it. This is just some of the information that I've received, that contains many, many facts. In the last couple of weeks, I received something from the Glen Lake Association, that they're continuing with scientific testing methodologies, QPCR, to easily differentiate between human and animal sources. One of my constituents, and I believe he's here today, might want to go over this with you, provided me with a study of the Empire's septic systems age profile, and it, you know, has some interesting facts. I just think that the time has passed, when we should have had a septic ordinance in this county. And I would like to make a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners, that we request the Benzie-Leland County District Health Department, Environmental Department, to provide Leland County Board of Commissioners with an appropriate ordinance. I believe that a starting point is time transfer. I believe that, as we look forward to the future, we do need to look 50 years ahead, and that when the completion of the digitization of the records occurs, that we further extend that into a time-based proof of having your system inspected.
Commissioner, Board. Any more comments? Commissioner, Locke.
Yes, thank you. I also disagree with the idea of a blanket ordinance for our county. First place, we don't know exactly what we're dealing with. You've got Glen Arbor area, those soils over there, they're marginal, we know that. There's a lot of lakes over there, it's a very low area. And I commend those townships that are taking this on themselves, because they know what their township is, and they know what they're dealing with. So I commend that, and that's how I think that this could be approached, and should be approached. And this information also could be shared with the townships. But I'm also opposed to a sale or transfer, because I think it does, I know it does bring harm to those who have systems that are working, they have modern systems, and they have compliant systems. But then when the home is sold, for example, I know a couple down in Lake Anne, a few years ago, that were buying a home, and had to wait for the septic inspection. And were ready to close on their home, the closing date come and left, no report on the septic system. In the meantime, interest rates are going up, all sorts of things. It just was held up because of staff, not enough staff. So by the time they then finally got the report that the system was fine, they were able to close on their home, turned around and sold the home last year, and the same thing happened all over again to the new owner. There was another delay in the report, even though the system was fine. So there's hiccups in that, the transfers also fansing our agricultural community, because as you add a name to a parcel of the farmland, if you want to add your kids to the farm, the homes all have to be inspected again, every time that comes around too. Even though, nothing wrong with the systems, and the systems are up-to-date and modern, and have just been inspected. So there's that, those issues that I don't think the blanket ordinance is going to work. So that's what I'm asking.
If I may.
Commissioner, answer. You had to hand up.
Can I respond? I just want to clear up one misconception there. When we do an evaluation, they're good for three years. So if we were there, everything was fine, then for three years, we waived that evaluation. And even if it has been unoccupied for three years, we continue to waive that. So the only thing that we would do is, after six months, we would collect some other water sample, and that would be it.
Right. But for every three years, that's an expensive inspection. Thank you for bringing that up, because that was another point I wanted to make. But I've heard it can be upwards of $1,000 for an inspection. By the time you have your system pumped, right, did you need it pumped for them?
We do not require that. So our fees on the high end would be, for Leland County, would be 454, and that would be for a well and septic system evaluation, for a system we have no records of.
And how are you going to test it if it hasn't been pumped?
We look in it. We open it up, and we look at the water level, the sludge layer, scum layer. It's not a real pretty business, but it's actually better if it's not pumped, because we can see where the water level is, if it's leaving the tank, so. We don't mind if it's pumped, but, yep, sorry.
I was wondering if you could reread the motion? I think it's mandating to them to produce an ordinance, and they're a separate entity, we can't mandate them. All we can do is request it.
I use the word request.
Okay.
I can read it again, if you'd like.
I have to go back and listen to the statement.
Okay. Could you reread it? That would be, I'd like.
I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners, that we request the Benzie-Leland County District Health Department, Environmental Department, to provide the Leland County Board of Commissioners with an appropriate ordinance. I, you know, I didn't really get a chance to speak to my motion after I made it. And the reason I'm putting it onto the Benzie-Leland County District Health Department, is because we're not experts in septic, and there's no point in us having a study committee, because we don't, you know, we don't have enough knowledge, we don't have the expertise that they have there. We're asking them to come back to us with what they believe would be an appropriate ordinance. And I'm making a request, you know, that's not a mandate, certainly, and that would give us something that we could actually discuss then.
I just want to clarify for a legal issue, I think, from last time, because we had legal opinions. We cannot pass an ordinance, it has to come from the Benzie-Leland County Health Department, make sure everyone understands that. Once they pass the ordinance, both boards have to approve that ordinance. So we would not have the ability to come up with, we could not veto what they would pass, or so forth. So legal processes, it has to come from the Health Department Board, it has to be approved by the Health Department Board, then it has to come back to our Board to approve it. But we do not have the right to modify it, or change it.
And I think it does have to go to Benzie's Board as well.
Yes, both Boards have to approve it.
And that's what CASC is going through, because they did it in, I think, 10 different counties, and so they have to have 10 different counties to eliminate theirs.
I just want to make sure everyone understood the legal process that has to go through. It's not a county board issue, it's a Health Department issue, that has to be endorsed by the county board, once they officially approve it, if they do.
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, I know you had Dr. Rose here. What's that?
You can call that. Hi.
No, no, you can call that.
No, I'm totally sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I thought we stopped, but I missed that.
I haven't started work.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Speed now, or forever hold your peace.
Go ahead.
I'm not going to support the motion, here's why. The Health Department can come up with all different kinds of ordinances. It's a political decision, as far as what do we think we should do? Should we do a point-of-sale? Should we do a mandatory inspection in certain areas, or countywide? That's a political decision, and, you know, yeah, they can make a recommendation, but we have to pass it afterwards. And I am not a fan of point-of-sale. I'm going to say it right out loud, I am not a fan of point-of-sale, because it is a compromise. You're not, I would much rather see us mandate an inspection of those systems that are very suspect. Those systems that haven't been looked at, are in a vulnerable area, so many feet from a, you know, I don't know what the footage is, you know, 50 feet, 300 feet, whatever it is, from a Laker stream. Those are the systems that are most at risk of causing public health problems. Those are the systems I think we need to look at quickly, not wait, and maybe never look at them, because, our enterprise guy's gone, but.
No, he's been there.
Yeah. There's a guy, a attorney advertises, "Hey, I'll put your, come to me, I'll set it up, so your system will be entrusted, it'll never have to be sold, or transferred, ever again." We have people advertising that. And guess what? It'll never be looked at. And that might be the system that we really need to look at. So I, you know, I would much rather see us move in a direction of addressing those systems that are most suspect, and most at risk of causing a problem, a public health problem. Those, you know, and that's where I'm coming from. And I'm just being honest with you. I am not a fan of point-of-sale. We have seen other locations that went that direction, and they're now reversing what they're doing, because it is, it was a compromise to start with, and it was a poor compromise. And there are other jurisdictions that are moving in the opposite direction. So I would much rather see a, and, you know, until the Health Board gets some feedback from us of what we want, you know, you're saying, you know, throw something at us, and we'll tell you whether it sticks or not. You know, and that's where I'm coming from. I think we owe them some direction of what we would like to see, and then have them give it to us. That's my two cents.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I would want that. I would want the Commissioners' input as to what you'd want to see in the ordinance, and how you would want to have it tailored to your county. We would obviously have input on that. And to address your concern, as far as those systems that are most vulnerable, Benzie County, the way they address that, and you can read it in what I gave you, in section 2.912, is they had a 10-year right to use. So any system that we had no records on, or that was constructed prior to December 31st in 1971, a questionnaire was sent to their home. It was, what's your name, address, property number, what kind of system do you have, how old is it, what is the construction, if you know it? If that individual mailed that back to the Health Department, it's right in the regs here, they had 10 years from that point to use that system, at no penalty. So then they would have that 10 years to know that they needed to update that system, and get that updated. So the systems, or the individual that did not send that questionnaire back, they were put on the list of, is there a system there? Let's check their systems, because they don't know, they didn't respond, and they're usually in the most vulnerable areas.
Commissioner, Russell.
Yeah, I don't, I like the motion. I'm willing to pull off my second. I want compromise, I want to do something. This is a map of Leland County, it's all watershed. It's not just whether they're on the lakes and the streams, it's all watershed. We've got reams and reams of folders from experts, that have testified to this group in the last 10 years, or 15 years, saying, "We've got a problem." We've got scientists all over the world. We've got 49 states out of 50, saying it's important to inspect septic systems. We're the only ones that aren't doing it. Ronald Reagan is credited with saying, "Facts are stubborn things." But John Adams said that, and I want to read the quote. "Facts are stubborn things, and whatever may be our wishes, or our inclinations, or the dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the state of facts and evidence." We have the evidence. Let's have a motion that at least four of us can agree on, and let's move forward, and let's solve this problem.
Commissioner.
You know, when I stated the motion, it was a request for an appropriate ordinance, and then I qualified it by saying, "The starting point is time of transfer." This has proved very successful in many locations, with the goal, after digitization, that we could expand it to a time-based situation. I'm just looking for a starting point. I think that, you know, Eric's facts that he's provided, Glen Arbor Township, 18.8 of the inspections were not up to speed, 18.8 percent. In the early years of Benzie County, 9% were failing. They decreased that to 4.4 percent. Let's just get a starting point. And I am willing to amend my motion, if there's some other language that you prefer. All I'm asking is that, we request that of the Board. And I also might make a comment, that the Benzie-Leland County District Health Department Board is made up of three people from Leland County, and they're all three in this room today, and three people from Benzie County. So all of your Board members are here today, the Benzie-Leland County District Health Board members.
Commissioner, Russell.
Yes, and I agree with Tony. The shoe doesn't fit all sizes, the foot doesn't fit, I don't think. Point-of-sale. I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done at the Health Department, as far as getting the records put together, so that we can, once we start to look at these properties that are vulnerable, the most vulnerable, we have records of it, and we just keep moving in that direction. A point-of-sale inspection is not going to move any faster than if we take a good look at what we actually need to do, going forward, with records, inspections, and targeting those areas of concerns initially. That's where I'm at. But blanket point-of-sale, you know, you're throwing mud on the wall, as far as I'm concerned, and you're hoping something sticks. You're hoping you can solve the problem, and that doesn't work for me.
Commissioner, Locke.
Thank you. I agree with that. I think we need a plan, and not an ordinance. I think Leland County is unique, and our soils are different, even within our watersheds. There's areas where there just could never be a problem. There's a lot of areas down Southern End of the County where it's not an issue. So where there are problems, and where we know there is direct problems, I agree, we can come up with a plan and go after those, and be a whole lot faster. We're doing, and there's a lot of other areas too, that we haven't even discussed today, when it comes to our clean water. And that's such as, somebody mentioned, where this is really coming from, in the lakes. And when we know that there are boats that empty their systems out in the lake, you're going to have human pathogens, because they've just emptied their system out in Little Traverse Lake. I don't know how to stop that. That's a boating issue, that's a boating problem. Maybe... Maybe the fill stations cost too much, I don't know because I don't boat, but that is a problem. You've got your, you know, the nitrates on the lawns of the cottages along our lakes or rivers is a problem. So I think there's a, that there's a need of a plan and not an ordinance, but I oppose an ordinance.
Commissioner Sotis.
Well, as I'm sitting here listening to all the comments, it sounds to me like really there is support for septic inspection. I support it. And I think this is what I'm hearing from others. Some may want to call it a plan, others may want to call it an ordinance. I, I think we do need to start somewhere as, as has been suggested and as our motion is suggesting. I'm wondering, Commissioner Ansari, if you have some amendment language that would broaden it or it'd be inclusive to provide direction to the Health Department, which I'm seeing a lot of head nodding there, would include the concerns of getting started and doing something, but also would address the fact that there are areas that we want to start including right off the bat? Can you provide maybe an amendment?
Mr. Chairman?
No, she had, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Some language that might be acceptable.
So is that through?
Well, I'd like an answer to the question. I mean, I'd like to give...
Okay, if he wants to speak, we'll call him, but he hasn't raised his hand or anything, and I would like to say something here.
Go for it.
In that, we have not addressed the cost. I mean, there was one point where you said it's going to be $6,000 to $30,000 when they fixed these things?
Yeah, they were just numbers. Various buys place to place. It may have to be a pump system if it's an ordinary run-of-the-mill.
But how would that, I mean, we have a problem with affordable housing, and how is this going to make housing more affordable if we're adding $6,000 to $30,000 to someone buying a home? You know, plus, plus the inspection, plus the pumping out if they wanted to pump it out. So, I mean, that, I mean, I guess that's something that we don't seem to address. You know, I know that Dr. Rose, the person who was on here and actually came up, made the effort, came up, said that no septic system works 100%. And, and so that, and then she says, she thinks it's happening, but she didn't say it is happening. She says she thinks, and then, but it probably is. So I just thought that, and I think, I was, I was wondering, you talked about wells a lot, so with the, Mike, one of the things is, it looks like you're talking about a well and septic inspection.
We'll do both, depending on the house.
Okay. So, and I was wondering, what is the cost of this since instituting to the homeowners of Benzie?
The cost?
Yes.
Per person?
No, just the total cost that it's cost. You know, how much have the homeowners paid for these inspections, you know, and repairs and other things?
It varies from place to place, so I couldn't give you the exact number.
Is it a half a million dollars? Is it $100,000?
I couldn't tell you. I don't have numbers for that.
We don't know how much it's cost. But the other thing is, then you talked about non-compliance. Does non-compliance mean it's polluting?
We, if it's not significantly meeting our code requirements for construction and isolation distance, then yes, it would be.
Okay, so, so if a place has a well, is it, I mean, a dry well, is it non-compliant system?
Not necessarily, no.
Not necessarily?
No, like I mentioned to Commissioner Ansari, if it's in an area where it's isolated from wells, groundwater, surface water, wetlands, we can't find any, anywhere where it is not meeting our code or the spirit of the code in a significant way, then we allow it.
And if it's on someone else's property, is that non-compliance?
At that point in time, we notify the owner that it's not on their property, and they need to contact their neighbors to make sure they get...
But you don't qualify it as non-compliance?
Not necessarily, but at that point in time, we would require that if it's not going to be moved, that it be put in the deed of both properties so that it's noted legally.
So, so, and, so if it has roots in it, then that's, that's still not a non-compliant unit? So you're only talking about the 9% that you found non-compliant as the ones that were not polluting or were polluting?
Correct. So for instance, if you had a septic system where we opened the septic tank and it came up out of the lids and came above, that would be a system that is not compliant, that would not meet the code.
But does that mean it's polluting?
Yes, it would. And it's going to, before long, if it hasn't already, would be backing up into the house.
Right, it'll fail.
And then you certainly have a health issue then.
Okay, because when I looked at Glen Arbor's thing, they called all of those things non-compliant, but most of them were not polluting.
The, the way their ordinance reads is that they put the onus on our department to do the inspection and to provide a report whether or not it meets the code significantly or not.
But we still don't know what it costs the people, and, you know, but you're thinking that it will help. I mean, do we, do we have from the Health Department diseases or issues from anyone in Benzie or Leland that are caused by these?
Problem is, you have HIPAA, so even if they were ill from that, they wouldn't provide those numbers. So, I mean, if you went in with a stomach issue, they would say it's a norovirus, but if you picked that up from the septic system, you wouldn't know that per se. That's, that is the problem with any septic system or even a sewer system, or even a factory dumping chemicals in the ground.
So we're just assuming people are getting sick from it?
They're non-point source pollution areas. So the, they talked about the QPCR. That is something that could be used to test your DNA and then go up to the lake and test it and see if those DNA match. But it is such a brand-new technology, and even I don't have a full grasp of it. That could be used at that point in time, but when that could happen or the cost of that...
Is that what Rob Herman's doing now?
That's, they are doing the QPCR, that's correct, so. And you asked about the low income that may have issues. There are organizations that they can go through with our community connections that if they can't afford to replace a system, they can get financial assistance. And we will waive permit fees for those that are in financial need.
But if they're buying a house, would they...
Typically, they're not a financial issue at that point, so.
Commissioner West.
This is a, listed on our agenda here today as a goals update, and I am willing to withdraw my motion. I can hear what everybody is saying, and as Commissioner Sotis Little said, I believe that there is support for some sort of ordinance or plan. And I would like the, I don't think we're ready to go forward on anything in the next week. The Health, the Health Board will be meeting later this month, and I think it can be discussed at the Health Board level, so I would like to withdraw my motion.
Is that okay with the secretary?
Reluctantly so.
Okay, so then, then we'll move on, you know, within the agenda? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Eric.
Can we?
Five minutes? Okay, five minutes.
So...
So here we have the review of financials.
Ow!
Is that a question or...
Are you ready, Madam Clerk?
Are you ready? You're just reviewing right now. Okay, I got them right here.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. On page one of, it was claims and accounts.
Bender.
It was auto service. Is that a business just called Auto Service?
Yes.
I think it was Marine.
Auto Service Center.
Okay. Okay, where, where is that?
It's on Front Street in Traverse City.
Oh, okay.
Goodyear Chayers.
I think it's the Goodyear place. That's what everybody calls it.
Been there forever.
Oh, okay. Okay, I probably been, was it Marine?
This one was 331, which is, yeah, it was a bulk trailer.
Okay. Okay, I just, I just wasn't, I didn't know if that was really the, the name of the... All right, on, I can't find, on, on page three. It was for ammunition.
CNP distributors.
There it is, I found it, hold on a second. So it is, I guess it's probably... Okay, what is it? Simun, simunition.
It was spelled right. It's a nine-millimeter FX marking cartridge, it's orange.
So it's like ammunition, but it's a simunition?
It's called simunulation. Uh-huh, and this is for the, for the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha, okay. Okay, very cool. On page four, we have, let me think, it was a senior services question. Okay, this, this question had more to do with the aesthetics of our hallway. We're going to put another tack board outside of senior services. I noticed we've added, I think it was already put up, was it?
Those are eliminated with, I think it was already put up down here.
Was it?
What is the purpose? Yeah, this is kind of where we're going to, we're beginning to stick things up on the walls without any...
I saw the invoice come through and it, not everything I needed.
Okay, well, I'm just curious.
We'll check into it.
If you'll let me know. What's the purpose? Do we really need to keep taking away from, okay.
Things really should stay in their office, I think.
This was the intention, I don't, and this is something that really has, like, the clerk has a post, you know, so we, I understand that, but we don't have to, was where I was coming from. The other one was Peninsula Perennial Nursery, page 13. So it has to be building safety, but I really don't understand why, I mean, it sounds like a porta-john.
Oh, I can, there was a...
You do want to say what you're supposed, okay. And why are we...
There was a miscommunication by one of our inspectors that he mandated they get a porta-john. Turned out he was incorrect, and so therefore we reimbursed the, the property owners.
Okay, because that's nothing we normally do.
No, no.
So Peninsula Perennials Nursery?
In Northport, yes.
Oh, they were the ones that were forced to buy it?
Yes.
Okay, I understand why.
So we picked up the cost of that.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
It was not mandated.
Madam Clerk, yep, I understand, thank you. That, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Okay, then we move on to public, or special reports by staff commissioners. Just a reminder, we have a special board meeting next Tuesday at 4:00 to review the HVAC bids. Those are due Friday, so we'll charge the results to you by the weekend.
That's at 4:00?
Yep. I believe it's 4:00. It's going to be, and then we'll have pizza or something.
Just for regular?
Yeah. But there's a special meeting, 4:00. Anything else, anyone? So then that would bring us to public comment. Please, come forward. Yes, please state your name.
Hi, I'm Chris Frye from Empire. I participated in the study group that went through 279 records of parcels, septic systems in, at the Health Department down the street. We went, we went and looked for a record of across 350, no, over 500 parcels and found only files for 279. We learned later that 350 parcels have structures or buildings on them within our parcels within our little village. And so we ran the math, and Peachy has a chart of our results. So that concluded that 20% of our homes had septic systems in the village that had no record, none whatsoever. And then when we looked at records going back into the 80s and 70s, the number grew to 40% of systems either have no record or are at least 30 years old. So I don't, I'm not an expert, I don't know the lifespan of septic systems, and I've been a big proponent, having now spent hours and days inside the file cabinets down the street here at the Health Department. I understand the dynamic, and I've been a proponent, quite frankly, of the digitization process. But I've now sort of kind of concluded that if we digitize all these records, and it is a huge undertaking, because it's not just scanning paper, it's looking at the paper and looking and seeing, because modern scanning techniques are not going to say whether this is a final inspection, what the year is, the signature, the dates, I mean, it's, it's not just scanning paper. If at the end of the day, the Health Department comes up with some sort of profile, working with the Equalization Department, Rob Herman, and shows a year or two from now a map of all the parcels in the county that have septic systems 30 years or older, or septic systems, or systems that are presumed to, and that have no record whatsoever in the Health Department, if we have that information, what are we going to do? Is there a political will to then at that point pass a time, age-of-time inspection ordinance? If the Health Department goes through all, and it's, it's an enormous undertaking to figure this out digitally, are we going to then pass an ordinance that says, "Our records indicate that your, you have no record of your active septic system in our files, a Health Department employee is going to be contacting you soon and would like to come by your house or your cottage and inspect that place"? Are we going to have the political will to pass that kind of inspection? Let alone fund the Health Department at that point if you find that there are 1,000 systems presumed to be active systems that have no record at the Health Department, whether it's 1,000 or 2,000? Are we going to fund the Health Department and give them the legal authority to go knocking on that door politely, contacting them first, making phone calls, making letters, but eventually having the right to go on that property and say, "You know what? Yeah, we're inspect, we need to inspect your property. We have no record of what is, what is on your property." Are we going to be willing to do that? Because otherwise, to put the Health Department through a huge digitization effort, of which I've been a proponent, is going to be almost a waste of time and a waste of taxpayers' resources. So thanks for listening and hope you can kind of come to some conclusion. Thank you.
Please, come forward.
My name is Jacqueline Kendall, and I live in Casson Township, and I just wanted to say two things. One is that my whole experience was that about property in 2012, the first thing, one of the first things I did as soon as the snow was gone was have my septic pumped. Less than six months later, I was standing in sewage water in my front yard. Had I known, even if there'd been a strong recommendation when I was going through the sales process, the purchasing process, that my septic should be inspected, that would have been a helpful thing. Had there been an ordinance, I would have saved $25,000, or at least split $25,000, which had to be done immediately because my septic had contaminated my well. Just saying. The other thing is, it's really hard for me personally to listen to people say, "I agree with you, the, this, the ordinance proposed or the action proposed by Peachy is not broad enough." I'm absolutely convinced that more needs to be done than just point-of-sale. However, what I'm hearing sounds like the roads in Leland County are bad. Some of them are real bad. But we're not going to do anything about any of them because we don't have the money to start anywhere. And that doesn't make any sense. And that doesn't make any sense to me. In, in, in the event, I mean, with a point of sale ordinance, I personally would have been protected and so would my neighbors. Um, and the twenty-five thousand dollars that I spent, it would have been a whole lot easier if I could have incorporated it in my mortgage. Um, however, to do nothing, to say nothing, to sit back and say, "Well, we, you know, you can't tell if your septic is bad." Well, yeah, you, you can, but not by having it pumped. Um, and so, and I was fortunate, when you ask about the dollars, I was fortunate. I had enough lot space that we didn't have to build our own system. I don't know how much more that would cost. But for me personally, point of sales makes perfect sense to start. And then when we expanded, when the finding out who hasn't been inspected and who never had to get a permit, whatever, at least the portion part will be done. There then won't be a thousand or more people lined up to have their septic inspections because the point of sale house is already taken care of. Just saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mike Litch. I'm a Casson Township resident. We bought our, um, cottage, oh, in the early nineteen eighties, and lived in there off and on over the years, and then rebuilt in the, the end of, uh, the century. We, uh, rebuilt and, and moved into a new house, added an upstairs and another bedroom, and had to get an inspection. But in the time we had been visiting there and coming there, because we lived downstate or in Indiana, we were using the facilities and didn't know, you know, I'd always been at a place where there was a septic, uh, system, not, not, uh, the same kind of systems most people have in this part of the, the state. Uh, I was shocked to find out what kind of a system I had and I really felt bad. I'd been involved in water quality, uh, testing and water quality issues for years, even before I came and live on Glen Lake now. And, uh, it was, it was shocking to me. And, and I was, you know, involved in water quality. It was, it was terrible. We had it rebuilt. It's, it's a good system now. We have an infiltrator system, a great, uh, pressure system, and, and it works, but if you're rebuilding or if you're expanding, there's always, you know, you've got a check and balance on what's, what's going on with the system. You have, uh, requirements where it has to be inspected. But if you're just moving into a place that's old, that was built in the forties, our cottage, there's no system. I love your proposal, uh, Peachy, about going with a time of sale, point of sale, inspection, at least doing something, getting on with it, taking that first step. And then later, you know, improving the system or, you know, tightening down on it and having required inspections later. Uh, and it's not just the lake that I want to protect. It's all of the health of the people in all of Lelandaw County drinking water. It's very, very important, and we need to protect our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Hi, my name is Barb Stamaris and I live in Soulan Township. And I moved up to Lelandaw County about five years ago. And I think the idea that many people have, I mean, this is the Great Lakes State and we're the only state without statewide septic ordinances, at least minimum standards. And then to think that Lelandaw County is known for its water and has so much, um, built on that, it's, it was just really shocking to me that we in Lelandaw County didn't have a septic ordinance when our neighbors, Benzy, and sharing the same Health Department, uh, does. So I would like to see this board of commissioners take that first step, which is all the motion was asking for. That was the motion that was withdrawn. And I, I think we need to take that first step because we're a model to the state and maybe the nation in some ways with what we're doing. So I think we should at least, um, learn from and accept what we can get from what Benzy has done. And it can be tweaked. I'm sure they've tweaked it as they've gone along. And there's a lot of openness to wanting input from Lelandaw County. So I thought that all the proposals that were made and the presentation by Mr. Johnston were excellent and quite moderate in terms of, this is a start. In, in the same regard, I feel like the commissioners I heard who are opposed to point of sale seem to be pointing out individual examples of how this could go wrong and how it could hurt a homeowner here or how it could be that a boat dumped their waste. And so it's not perfect. We're not going for perfection. But I think what we need to look at is the greater harm and the big picture. Do you think there's more harm in one homeowner here or an imperfect point of sale system that doesn't catch everything? You think there's more harm in going with that than there is in the big picture of harm to our overall health, our future, and what Lelandaw represents? So that's what I wanted to, um, say. And I do have one specific question that I don't want answered today, and I know this is not the right time, but after I attended the water symposium that was spoken of and, uh, saw that same presentation, I, it had been five years and I got my, um, septic field pumped out. And when Williams came to do that, and I had asked the people that I spoke to on the phone, what, where does it go? What do you do with it once you pump it out? And I couldn't get an answer. And then when the guy came and was pumping it, I asked him. And I had a hard time getting an answer, but I was persistent. And he told me that, "Well, you're in Soulan Township, so it will be spread on a farmer's field." If I was in Elmwood Township, just, which is like a half a block from me, um, it would go to the waste facility, I think in Grand Traverse. And I'm not saying I'm certain of all these things, but this is what he told me. And so my question to you is, um, is spreading on a farmer's field as good a system as going to a waste facility? And is there a patchwork of the different townships can have different regulations even within Lelandaw County? So I'd like you to answer those questions, you know, in time as you're looking into this. And I want to thank you for being willing to look into it further. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, please come forward.
My name is Jim Dummer and I live on the East Shore of Glen Lake. And, uh, I've been fortunate, like many of the people here in the room and the families, that, uh, the bulk of my life has been spent in Lelandaw County. And despite the color of my hair, it's only half the time, my seventy-six years, that my family has owned the property on the East Shore of Glen Lake. During that ti- time, tremendous changes happened to the county. We all know that. One of the changes that's really been dramatic, Bill, has been the usage of summer homes and view homes throughout the county. And by that I mean the usage of them, going from approximately seventy days out of the year now to include all the holidays and, uh, people retiring here, and so much more intensive use of the home, therefore intensive use of the whole system. And, uh, that includes the septic system. About two years ago, I was asked to get involved in a task force to lead and head up a water protection task force and look at ordinances. Uh, the townships that were impacting the, uh, districts around the Glen Lake area. I was surprised to learn a number of facts, many of which you heard, many of which you know. One of only one state that doesn't have a septic wide, uh, system for sanitation. Two, uh, we, uh, the lakes and the streams that we have in our area, one of them is one of the top seven to ten percent lakes in the whole world as related by, uh, scientists, or certainly in the United States. Unfortunately, when they did the survey, they found that the same data, that, that, those lakes that were in the upper classification were falling down at the rate of twenty-five percent every five years. The lakes are aging and things like that. You help them age when we don't take care of it. As an ex-banker, I can tell you that if you were to apply for an FHA loan, a veteran's loan, an inspection before the loan can be processed would be mandatory. I can also tell you that as I take a look at the economics of it, I wish we were in the position of Benzy County where we'd inspected such a great percentage of their homes over a period of time that we wouldn't be looking at the numbers we're looking at now, approximately eleven thousand outside of the, uh, of the modern code that we have in there now. If we had put this in twenty-seven years ago, we would have been a lot further along. I ask you now, as, as a banker and economist, to look forward to twenty-seven years. And it does become, ladies and gentlemen, a tipping point. Whether it's our beautiful rolling agrarian lands, it's our lakes and our streams. If we don't have that unique quality that brings people here, to this unique county, we will be like any other rural area in the country. We'll be at risk. We have to, don't want, you don't want to be sitting here out in the audience, you wouldn't be elected, and say, "I wished we would have acted. I wished we would have looked for perfection." I think sometimes that, uh, we've got to come together, let's get started on this. Let's get started, let's put it in, if it goes along well for the next four years, you can tighten it up to ten years, twelve years, whatever the scientists and whatever the Health Department says. Can also tell you one statistic that came up here. I don't think an inspection before you sell the home or you pass it on to your child or your granddaughter of three to five hundred dollars. You don't want to pass on an imperfect car. Why would you pass on an imperfect home? I can also tell you when they did the inspections in, uh, Glen Arbor Township, they gave you the statistics about what was out of compliance, what was in compliance. Terms of delay, I looked at the statistics, the statistics, and there was only one of them. From the time the homeowner applied till the time they received the letter, the results of that inspection, it was outside of two weeks. One doesn't just decide to sell a home or give a home away at a matter of five minutes and execute a transaction like that. Those things are well thought out in a family meeting with the help. I thank you for your time. I thank you for looking at it. I urge us to get started today. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Edward Lampier. Uh, I'm a resident of Glen Arbor. My family's been here less time than, uh, than the Dumbers. I, we came to here in the nineteen twenties. And I've spent much of my life on Glen Lake and in the watershed. Um, I, I sit here now just to, I add, I, first I should say I'm, I'm trained as a biochemist. Uh, I'm on the, the Dean's Advisory Board of the University of Michigan School of Public Health. I'm also on the Glen Lake Association Board and a part of the task force that, that Jim just spoke about. I'm not going to add to the eloquent comments. I want to sit in support of all the comments you've heard. I also want to thank Peachy for putting forward this proposal. And I'd encourage those of you who have your concerns about a point of sale ordinance and, and, uh, perhaps even other ways of approaching septic inspections to, to think about this more broadly from a public health perspective. It's not a repairing issue. It's a public health issue for the county. Uh, and, and I think that's really what government should be doing, is looking at the kinds of issues that affect all of us, not just now, but in the future. Um, and I'd encourage you to listen to the, to the facts, and I think many of the things that were referred to as innuendo. That's just the way scientists speak. Scientists don't speak in black, white. They speak about, "Here are our findings. Here's what we think. Here's what we're doing." There is not a public health official in the country or, or environmentalist who doesn't think that inspections and, and upgrading of septic systems is the right thing to do and, and, and looking at that from a public health perspective. So I'd encourage you all to, to, to open your minds to getting started. It may not be the perfect way to start, but it's certainly a tested and, and successful way to get started. We might be able to improve on that going forward. Fantastic. But let's get started. Let's make this, uh, an effort that we can all be very proud of both now and in the future. So thank you very much.
Any other comment? Please, come forward.
Trisha Denton, and I'm a resident of Cleveland Township. But I'm here representing the League of Women Voters Lelandaw County today. And I want to thank you for your ongoing efforts, uh, in support of early childhood, with the Early Childhood Committee work that the county's been doing, that the board has charged, um, has supported. Specifically, I want to speak to the, uh, um, League of Women Voters positions that support that, policies that provide equitable, quality public education for all children, pre-K through grade, grade twelve. It's supportive promotion of healthcare systems that provide access to a basic level of quality care for all U.S. residents including behavioral health control and controls to healthcare costs. Um, meeting basic human needs, supporting programs and policies to prevent or reduce poverty and promote self-sufficiency for individuals and families. And to support programs and policies to expand the supply of affordable, quality childcare for all who need it. And to support policies and programs that promote the well-being, development, and safety of all children. So thank you again for your work on that very important issue. My second reason for approaching you this, today, um, you, you saw me speak in the, in the video, so you know where I stand as far as, um, my belief and the leaf, the League's belief that this is a public health issue. And I, uh, thank you for your time and attention to that, that portion of it. This is a thing that I think affects, uh, every resident of our county. I appreciate your careful consideration of it not unduly impacting any of our citizens negatively. Uh, but I, as other people have eloquently spoken, I think there are ways to move forward with something that would be good, a good start and, and better than nothing. Uh, the two positions that I want to highlight from the League of Women Voters U.S. that support this action are under our, um, Environmental Protection and Control, Pollution Control positions to preserve the physical, chemical, and biological integrity of the ecosystem with maximum protection of public health and the environment. And underwater resources to support measures to reduce pollution in order to protect surface water, groundwater, and drinking water. Thank you again.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, then we'll move on to a commissioner's comment. Does anyone have a comment? Mr. Wester.
I do, and, and if I were sitting in the audience today, I, I would leave, I think, thinking that commissioners don't support septic inspection. And I think that's wrong because I think what we don't agree on is the perfect solution. And I read in a newspaper just yesterday, I think, about perfect being the enemy of the good. I'd challenge us collectively to find a good solution. It won't be perfect, but at least it's a start. And I think we could agree seven zero on that. We can find a good solution. We can find a good solution to protect our waters and our health. And it probably is different than any of us are thinking about. So that's my challenge to us.
Commissioner Austin.
I appreciate that comment, Ty. I think it's a great comment. So I think we should all work towards a good solution. But I do have one more question for the gentleman that was from the health department, if I may ask. Do you, when you permit systems currently, do you do a complete soil profile at the time?
This is really not time for questions. This is just commissioner comments.
Okay. That's my question. Could you send me an email?
I could talk to you. Any other commissioner comments?
I just, I just wanted to say, again, I believe that we're, we're approaching this backwards. We want to pass something that, that says we want this ordinance, but we don't even know what the ordinance is. What the motion, the initial motion that Commissioner Rettenbach made can be done, it can be done by the health department and should be done by the health department. And then that's what we should be looking at. It shouldn't be us deciding that they need to. They have the right. They're an independent agent and they have the right to put out an ordinance. You know, they, he could say, we want you to pass this ordinance like Benzy's. That isn't what we're doing. We're saying, we want to make up an ordinance and then we want them to implement it. And, and I think that's the backwards way to do it. I think the health department needs to come forward with an ordinance. And I don't understand why it's here to us because we can't pass a ordinance that we don't have. All we're doing is suggesting to the health department that they do it. And they can do that without any motion by us. So I'm, I'm kind of baffled by that. It keeps coming here, but yet, you know, I, I think there's, there's the will here to pass it if we get one. But I don't, I don't see where we can pass it before we know what it is.
Mr. Rettenbach.
Well, again, going over my motion, I was requesting that they provide us with an appropriate ordinance. So that's what I'm looking for too. And I, I think that the reason I went through today is because I heard people say that they didn't think the point of sale was the appropriate ordinance. And I'm hoping that in the future, the health board will be able to provide an appropriate ordinance for us. We'll be working on that.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Walker.
Yeah. I think it's very unfair for anyone to assume that, that because someone doesn't want a point of sale ordinance in the county, that they are either crazy, as I heard us called at break, or that we don't care about freshwater in, in, in clean water. And that is absolutely untrue. It is our duty to find what works for Lelandaw County. So there's many, many facets, many, many angles. And as I heard today, one of them that we didn't have time to touch on, we've touched on in the past, is, is the responsibility of realtors. If someone does move up here out of the city who's never been on a system, I think it's a realtor's duty to explain to them what they are getting into and what they are dealing with and how they should care for that system. Same as they should any other part of their home that they may not be familiar with. The other thing we didn't touch on was, was the very fact that the way our municipal systems are set up where they supposedly clean the, the water and then put it back into our lakes, I think is a real major problem with, with our fresh water. We know that when we have heavy rains, we get all kinds of E. coli that washes into our lakes. And a lot of times we have those systems that overflow or don't operate right when they get too overwhelmed. And I know for a fact that the Luddington plant missed an alarm, didn't trip, I believe, and dumped hundreds of thousands, I'm looking at Eric, of untreated ethylate into Lake Michigan. That's, so that's part of the problem. We're using our, our lakes instead of, you know, for these things, instead of some other way. So there's, it's, it's just such a complex system. And, and I think that, that there's some unfair assumptions being made and I, and I regret that.
Commissioner Soderst.
I, I think Commissioner Rettenbach's motion was, as she said, to get us started. The health department is saying we need a little guidance. And since there are commissioners sitting on that health department, they can give guidance in terms of our board and we can have something back that we can then act on. But I think it's important that other commissioners make their feelings known, if there's more talking with our representatives to the health board, what you would like to see in that ordinance that comes back, so that we really have a starting point. Because I think the frustration I'm hearing, I know I'm feeling and I know others here on the board, is we've been talking about this for quite a long time. And it is time to do something. Beth Fitz, Lelandaw County, but do something. So I'm hopeful that it can be taken up with the health board and I'm, I'm hopeful we can get something back soon.
Thank you. So then that brings us to approval of financials.
Ms. Turner.
Yes. I would recommend approval of claims and accounts, $94,910.67. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
I would recommend approval of post audit, $1,374,895.67. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We are adjourned.